You hear us, Troy?
I can hear y'all okay, can you hear me?
We are ready to go ahead and get started, um, and you're first up, so why don't you give us a nice glowing report like you always do?
Okay, let me do a little fair screen. Um, drop this on you, uh, you are the first to know this before anybody, because I haven't, I just finished it today, and that is our Oktoberfest Ambassador Program is up and ready to roll, and so we will be letting everybody know this week that might want to participate. We have three programs each weekend, and that is the Trokton Troop, the Festal Food Servers, and the Kinder Plots Group, and each one of those would be three, three nonprofits every weekend. Um, and in earning potential, a total earning potential of just over sixteen thousand dollars for some nonprofits to to make some extra cash, um, if they want to take part of that program, so we already have four nonprofits that are already interested uh, and will be, um, applying for that, so that is happening. And then another Oktoberfest news, some good stuff is that we have, uh, our entertainment lineup is all complete, all the slots are filled for all three stages that we'll have this year. Uh, we are something like eighty percent, one of our best, uh, stats right now is we're eighty-six percent. Uh, we sold eighty percent, eighty-six percent of the tickets we did on the first Friday already, uh, as of August eighth. They're sitting at about thirty percent sold. Uh, and then finally, we continuing with Oktoberfest, our commitment to, uh, making this a zero-waste event as all of our events, so in addition into, uh, re-orient compostable cups again this year, I'm working with Winton, uh, and Waste Loop. We also are toggling to a bunch of other things, um, this year we will be, um, only offering, um, water in aluminum cans, and we'll also offer some refill stations if you bring a water watcher bottle, um, to encourage that, and then also, um, where all of our vendors, we are, um, requiring them to no longer use single-use plastics or styrofoam, so taking baby steps into making this a completely easier waste event. Um, next up, I, I want to go to, there we go, I wanted to talk about footfall counts, because we just finished up July. Um, so this is the third month in a row that we've seen gains, um. February, March, and April, we were, our footfall counts were under the previous year, um. June, July, I'm sorry, May, June, and July, now have been over, um, and in fact, uh, we're just rolling through July, this is now our third year for data, so as of July, we now have three years of data instead of just two, so as of right now, we this July, we counted one point three six seven million footfalls, last year we counted one point one seven six million footfalls. Um, and then right now, August, uh, month to date so far, uh, we're August one through seven. Um, last year, uh, by the eighth, by the end of the eighth, the seventh, uh, we were at three hundred and sixteen thousand, and we're currently at three forty-seven. Um, the other program we have running right now to the end of August is our Carbons for Causes, um, which benefits the Backpack Mission with the Leavenworth Community, Nand Methodist Church, the Swim Bachelor Program with Upper Valley Nand, and the School Supply Program with Cascade Education Foundation, and we've raised just over three thousand dollars so far, so each one of those nonprofits should be getting a check of at least a thousand dollars by the end of the month. And then finally, um, our village ambassador, I just wanted to toot his horn, Dan. When Dan has some free time, Dan never has free time, but when he does have free time, um, we work with Public Works, and thank you Tom and his team for getting us to paint. But we try to do little projects, he's painted graffiti on the bridge, he's cleaned stickers off the backs of street signs throughout downtown, and late, and the latest thing he did was, um, is painting the Prominent sign to give it a fresh look, because it was really nasty, and none of the electrical boxes had been painted over, so it was just grays and tubes and wires and stuff, so, um, just a little beautification thing that he did there. Um, and we like to try to do that from time to time, we have some extra time that Dan has to work on some little beautification projects throughout downtown to make it a little nicer. And stuff that we know isn't a high priority for Public Works, but, um, uh, does have a lot of visual impact for our visitors, um, and that is the conclusion of my report.
Great, thank you, any questions?
Yeah, nice, Troy, hi guys, I'm in, I'm on Cape Cod, um, near Massachusetts. Troy, yeah, I really appreciate you starting out with zero waste or less waste during Oktoberfest. Do you guys do active recycling during Oktoberfest?
Yes, we actually have, um, we, we last year bought diversion cans, um, waste bins, so we could have compost, uh, recycling and, um, garbage. And we actually worked with Waste Loop and had representatives at each of the stations that helped, uh, people pick the right garbage cans to put their stuff in, and then they even went through the garbage afterward to make sure it was all sort of properly before composting it, so. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of time to spend on our garbage, I love to talk trash, so come see me anytime.
I love to talk trash, but I prefer talking recycling, so I appreciate you going the extra mile to get that recycling out there, because I think it's something we eventually need to do in the city, so. Thank you.
Troy, one more thing, I think, Troy, I had a special about what you were sharing, I think, didn't we also want to just at least inform the city council, we did have a wonderful, our last board meeting, we had a, uh, Callie Osborne. We bring, so we kind of gave her some perspective, Troy, you want to?
Yeah.
Yeah, just because I listened in to your last study session, and Callie was there, and was talking to you guys, um, and after that meeting, I reached out to her, and she came to our board meeting, I made a great discussion with her, and, um, so the the chamber will be putting something more formally, uh, more formal, um, to provide that kind of gives our position and where we think, um, the farmers market would work best based on traffic patterns, days of the week, deliveries, all that kind of stuff, um, but yeah, uh, in that way, at least you'll have, um, when you ask the question, what does the chamber think, you will have a good answer, um, so we want to provide you with that as well.
Right, huge, Troy, huge thank you from the backpacking crew of which I'm a member, and, um, thank you for selecting us, it means the world. Thanks.
Ah, you're welcome, as you saw, we had kind of a theme, it was all about the kids this year, so we wanted programs that, that, that really featured some great programs for, um, youth of Leavenworth.
Thanks.
Troy, I have a question.
Yeah.
Do you guys have a way to measure your footfalls against sales for the sales tax, is it when the footfalls are up or the tax is going up, are people spending money, or are they just?
They're just walking, they're just walking.
Well, I know, but that's the number he's using, so like when you used one point one million in July, do you guys convert that to dollars or any way that, or can you do that?
We can, yeah, because what I've noticed is, and what I've shown before to the city council, is that the trend lines for the, um, for the football data almost exactly mimic the retail tax and the lodging tax, um, trend lines, if you put these, these charts next to each other, you're going to see almost the exact same thing, so when I talk about these three months, my expectation is that our retail tax and our hotel lodging tax from May, June, and July are going to be increasing, or going to be at least on par with last year, when our footfalls are within the same, within the same zone.
Okay.
So, and so far, that has always been the case.
Okay.
So, we show.
May is down.
May is down. Uh, for retail.
Right.
Hotel motel down from the high numbers we've been seeing, but not down overall. But I do kind of the same thing with Troy's numbers, I'm thinking, okay, more people, more money, right? Um, parking for me is more of a driver of if parking is going up, then hopefully the retail and the hotel hotels following, and parking is up for June and July. So, like Troy just said, I'm hoping, retail is up for June and July, but May was down.
Yeah, and the May number wasn't a huge increase over the previous year, so it was, it was within about a hundred thousand, which is not a lot of people when you're talking about, so it was up, but it wasn't a tremendous gain. August and, um, I'm sorry, July and June have been quite a bit, quite a bit higher, so. Fingers crossed.
Now, we just, we just lag, so we can't compare them as soon as he can, he has instant numbers, we, we have a couple of month delays, so.
Parking's the only one I can go off.
Right, right.
It's real.
It stalls work. Any other questions? Yeah, thank you, and for ongoing innovation, and, um, yeah, keeping that ball rolling and doing good stuff, so. And I'm sure the nonprofits all really, uh, appreciate that too, being able to get involved and make a little money, so it's fun to see. All right.
Yeah, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thanks, Troy.
Thanks, Troy.
So next up, we've got Shalan Douglas Regional Port Authority, and Jim Kuntz and Stacy Domestery, is that how you say it? Domestery, okay. Are here to have a conversation with us about economic development beyond, I told them, I, I think we've got the tourism piece down, but, um, maybe, uh, some other things that maybe the port could, uh, work with us on up here, so we'll go ahead and turn it over to you, and.
Yeah, I'm just talking a little bit about the regional port, so basically, we checked the Port of Douglas and Polish Land, and we said, we found one economy, we have a river that goes through, and we have two separate portals. Two executive directors, two finance directors, so we combined several years ago into a unified portal for, we focused on economic development, so it's a lot better model, I think more efficient model. And since we've done that, we've been kind of on fire, as we've raised different economic development projects, we're coming to the region, not specifically Leavenworth, but obviously to the region, I think some of the big, big ones, uh, Microsoft is coming to the area, building data centers for Shalan County and Douglas County. National Investments, roughly three day. Each side of the county, just to give some perspective on that. Uh, Douglas County's total assessed value is ninety-two, total. Microsoft's going to put it.
Wow.
Shalan County, total assessment grew about sixteen point nine point. Again, uh, Microsoft, we're putting about, uh, yes.
Can we bring you up to the podium?
Oh, yeah.
Just so we can sell the people on Zoom.
People on Zoom then can see you, and you'll, you'll get picked up more on our, our line, so, yeah, yeah, sorry.
So anyhow, uh, that's one of the things that's happening is those are huge investments, and then up at the airport, we're putting in an incubator trades district, uh, for, uh, initial populations, we've got a lot of federal and state grants, and so anyhow, we're very active and pretty near service and lots of things, but we're here in Leavenworth, so what I can tell you is that my board has an interest in trying to figure out some projects that make sense, Leavenworth or the regional port to invest in. Um, I, I can tell you that the port commission's kind of philosophy in investing in economic development projects anywhere in the two-county area is one, it's obviously it's got to have an economic vitality, economic development component. And two, where the board is really focused on, there's got to be some type of financial return, it doesn't have to be perfect, but there's got to be some type of return so that eventually it gets paid back, so we can then just reinvest that money in the next economic development project, so. Let's look for something that aligns in both of those categories, and we have interest in, in doing something out here, and I know that you're updating your parking study. Uh, and, uh, I think we'd be anxious to see how that turns out, see what the cost is, I gave Shelby before the meeting today, some analysis that the Port of Shalan did, uh, many years ago about putting money into that, uh, helping the debt service payments and some other stuff, eventually we can get paid back on, so Shelby has that. I, the other thing I just wanted to point out, when we ever find a, an economic development project that aligns with all of us, it meets all goals. Uh, the board over the last two or three years, I would say, has itself in working, uh, grant funds and sorts, so for instance, the nine-ten sales tax fund in Shalan County, we just got awarded two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a project in cash. Last year before that, we got two hundred thousand dollars for another project, so if you can find a project that makes sense, I think we would be aggressively looking at the Shalan County point oh nine cent sales tax fund. We're both aligned on the project. Uh, at the state level, we continue to get millions of dollars every year from the state capital budget, we plant ourselves, we work very hard, uh, we started partners and others. This last session, we got nine hundred thousand dollars for the Air Army National Guard to relocate Fairchild to us, to make that work. Million dollars, the state capital budget for the trades district, and so we've done exceedingly well. At the federal level, uh, we have some really good government affairs folks who represent us in Washington DC, we've got a four million dollar EDA recently, we ran the queue to get three point nine million dollars to upgrade GH from the board, not passengers, but the GH, so. Um, we have just hit it out hard, because we fix resources in the economic development. So, uh, anxious to work with you, uh, you know, one of the things my board is only good about is that we are not going to define economic development for the city of Leavenworth, you're going to define it. We hope that it aligns with type of projects that we want to invest in, and then hopefully, uh, we can find something and more investment. Got an economic return, eventually, not, it's not to be perfect, it's going to be a financial return at some, some point in time, right, so we can align those two. Not only interested in investing, I think I would say no board is anxious to try to find something that we could use some of our resources in. Let's see, we know what that is.
Could you give us a few examples of some of the projects you've funded with some of the small cities in Shalan Douglas counties?
Well, yeah, let's, let's kind of, uh, talk through, uh, what we're doing, so in, uh, Shalan, city of Shalan, their big issue is that we have an airport up there, and does not have adequate fire flow. We're actually building one on, on the Shalan Airport. Uh, and so we, uh, went to Mike Steele, uh, and got the, I think it was three, four million dollars to extend that water line. We're putting in six hundred thousand dollars into that project, we went to the county, they're putting six hundred thousand dollars in. So that's going to get built out there, and then we'll probably have connection fees, uh, for people that are going to connect out there, so we can recover some of our dollars, so that's a perfect example for, for that community. Uh, trying to think of other projects that we're working on, Waterville, we happen to own the airport there, so we've got WS Goo T grants to crack seal, story seal, got cameras installed, now we just put bird power in, counts the daily activity. Uh, those projects, a lot of that was grant funding, which we just went out, and we have that city to get from those dollars. Uh, in the East Wenatchee area, again, uh, trades district, you know, there used to be, Diggly, I used to have these pods out there, the Inborn Airport and Business Park out there, uh, they went bankrupt. And so we got the buildings back, and we just shelled buildings, and we said, uh, like, one of the things we lack, uh, I think this team is affordable price production space for small businesses, especially those with industry population, so Senator Murray loved that project, the EDA loved that project. And so eleven million dollars to be labor.
Wow.
Nearly four million dollar EDA grant. We took out a two point five million dollar EDA loan. Representative Steele got us three million dollars in one biennium, another million, another biennium. And we, today we went out and did through the project.
Both, wow.
So, uh, that's cool, and that's one of the things I think we have a lot of passion for, to extend the, to find some space, is helping the trades, the people in the trades, the plumbers, electricians, the A to C folks that are entrepreneurial in nature, that how do you start a business when you can't get a shop or, or anything like that, the trades district, by the way, uh, we are using the federal money and all of that to keep the rents very low. The rents are fifty-five cents per square foot.
Per month.
Yeah, so eight fifty to, depending on the size of doing it, eight fifty to a couple hundred dollars a month. And then we've established our criteria that legal counsel has approved, non-discriminatory, but it's for, uh, businesses that have less than ten employees. It's for businesses that have five hundred thousand and less than that in the sales. And there's several other criteria to get in, so we wanted to make sure that the underrepresented populations uh, are going to get space, so that's one of our passions, is trying to help small entrepreneurial businesses find space, it's hard anywhere in this valley to find shop space for people to go into. We're very supportive of these trades districts of, of, those are just some of the examples that we're doing.
And how about cashmere?
That's what I was asking.
Yeah. We just got some funding on through that point oh nine, too.
Yeah, so cashmere, we've done several things, so the, we're checking on the site cleanup. Uh, at the end of the day, uh, there's going to be more money that we put in, and we're going to get back out, so that was a losing proposition for us, but we attracted Laos Trust in, to one of the sites that we cleaned up, they created, I think, fifty jobs and build trust for houses, they're just booming, um, and then, uh, another spot in that business park that we developed, uh, we built two incubator buildings, uh, because we wanted to help jumpstart it, and that was eight, nine million. Those are fully leased at this point, and then there's some other parcels right next door that we've got really good business leads on. And in, in both of those business leads, we've got nine-ten sales tax dollars, and one of them will announce here in probably a month or two, so. Yeah, we've, we've had some success with cashmere, but again, we're able to get thirty, forty acres, right, some light industrial and do something, right, and so, I mean, if we could ever find something in the community here, where we had a parcel that we could buy, and then sit down with the city and say, what's your vision? And you want an incubator building, you want a small shop space for trades district? And can we do it two levels with a bottom space is, is for the trades upstairs as living quarters? Those are all kinds of things that motivate us, so, uh, where, where's the property that we can buy and do that, how do we get started? And, uh, you know, we're in a single conversation.
What's your experience in buying land from the US government?
You know, pretty good, uh, and I, I can tell you why, is that we rely a lot, uh, to be quite honest and blunt with you, Senator Murray and Senator Camp. Murray is the chair, the corporations committee, Campbell, as you know, is the chair of the commerce committee. So if we have a very strong case of what we want to do with the property, and how economic development, this is the project we want to do, and why we want to do it, then I, I think we're usually willing to help. And so.
I'm thinking, take over, our utilized five acres that we have in our commercial district down here, that's
that's really owned, and he doesn't want to say it out loud, but it's color service. Offices, it could be anywhere in, aren't in prime real estate.
Yeah. Yeah, if that is something that the city council is motivated about, starting a conversation on that, then we should start that conversation, well, why, why not? Those two senators are really in a good position to help. So the question would be, the alternative location.
Right, right. So.
I was for it.
I don't think so.
Forest Service is not short on land in this county.
Yeah.
I think most people know, if you don't, Shalan County, eighty-five percent.
Yeah.
Shalan County is owned by the feds or the state.
Right. Jim, could you say something about the data centers at Microsoft, can you kind of flesh that out a little bit, what that's? I mean, what's that all about, they're just, because it's power's cheap, that's why they're here, and they can can you kind of give us a?
Yeah, I think there's several, uh, concepts, especially they can't build them quick enough. Well, actually, the data center, you just can't bring them quick enough, so, uh, it's Netflix accounts, there's AI coming on, it's everyone's cell phone, it's just this huge growing profit center of companies, and so, uh, power is important to them, but more important is the transmission capacity, these things take two hundred and sixty megawatts, fully built out. And so the question is, where can we get transmission into an area that has two hundred and sixty megawatts? That's the issue, actually, the price of power, I would say, is probably third or fourth on the list. Uh, in fact, in the Douglas County, uh, element, where everyone's going, the Douglas County PD said, we don't want you using wells damage, it's only so much of a resource, we're going to save that to a retail district. So Microsoft went out and bought third-party power. Green power. No idea what they're paying for, it's being transmitted in to Douglas County.
Interesting.
That's how much power is being used from wells damage to support, so it's because we have transmission capacity, because a lot of our transmission goes out, so they can take advantage of bringing that in. The same thing in Shalan County, it's, it's transmission, and having the ability to, to get power, so in that case, there's a forty million dollar substation being built, Microsoft wanted to check the Shalan County PD and said, build it, and then we have the transmission capacity out there near a home. And so the thing that's, that's really impressed me with Microsoft, and just blown me away, we're upgrading water systems to handle that in Malaga, and in meetings we have, they said, okay, how big of a pipe do you need, they said, we need this big of a pipe. They said, but build it this big, because we want to, we don't want it just for us, why don't we develop a system that everyone benefits, you know, with five, or they're doing it on both sides of the road.
Oh, nice.
So basically, they're building one building a year, it takes about eighteen months, though, uh, in Shalan County, they will start uh, this winter on the first building, eighteen months later, we're done. Uh, seventy-five jobs per building. And actually, we think that's good, because we can't bring an employer that needs to bring thousands of people, and they would run us out of town because of the housing and lack of, so it's seventy-five jobs per building. Eighteen months for each building to be built, I think we can grow into, uh, these are a hundred and fifty thousand year jobs. We have calculated on the Shalan County side, Shalan County and Incorporated property taxes and taxes are roughly ten dollars fifty cents per thousand. Uh, in the Malaga taxing district, going down about ten.
You're what?
It's going to go down a buck ten.
Buck ten.
Yeah.
Just because of the?
How big it is, yeah, it's going to go down a buck ten per thousand. Yeah, and a lot of it is because you have school bonds of a fixed amount debt service scale, right, then you bring three billion on top of that. Uh, it just, yeah, so it's, uh, so I think they're a responsible company. They are not asking for any government subsidies, they're paying for all their water, and upgrading all of these systems, seventy jobs, seventy-five jobs per building. They have been outstanding, they're absolutely outstanding. So anyhow, I think it's good, in the Shalan County PD, I don't think they're going to use PD power, again, I think it's going to be brought in outside the region, and then, uh, basically, it'll be an interconnect, and the PD will basically just bring it in off a transition fee basis.
Can you think of water supplies, there's no issue there, to get plenty?
I think the water supply is fine, the, uh, it's only peak, and its peak is in the summer. Uh, the rest of the time, we'll win on the fall, they just cool it through opening fans and using the natural air, so the peak is in the summer. Uh, and so what the port's going to do on the Shalan County side is we're developing a, uh, holding ponds for it, and for property, and all the water in the summertime, we will have holding ponds. Initially, we'll do some spray fields, but we will do some analysis on the water, which is actually potable water when they get it, right? They recycle three different times, and you shoot it to us. We want to take the water and evaporation ponds, test it to make sure it's not costing. We think actually, at some point in time, that's going to go to the Malaga Parks and Recreation for water lots. And we put it into one of the nearby irrigation districts, so we have a wise use of water, recycle. Microsoft's big on that, they want to be green, they want to do things the right way, and Douglas County side, that power contract they have, hundred percent green, hundred percent. I don't know what they're paying for a kilowatt, but I bet you seven, eight, nine. Is it, do you want to come green, or want to be carbon neutral by twenty thirty, so, um, I think this is a responsible investment on both sides, I think, I think you're going to do a good job, I think there'll be a good quarter assist.
What was the last time, uh, when, when was and what was it that you did put money into Leavenworth for anything?
I, I've been here, uh, five years, so it hasn't been within my, my time, so I, I do not know. I think, I think it was Parkin Study, I think we paid for that.
Was what?
Parkin Study.
With the Parkin Study.
Oh, you want to kick some into the one we're doing now?
I was thinking they might want to help us build the parking lot.
Well, yeah, we didn't talk to them about that.
Yeah, and I think we should look at that, I mean, I, I, I gave Shelby some stuff, internal documents that we have, that the board was willing to contribute to something, and so.
Because it is a big return on investment.
Yeah. If they keep coming, if they keep coming, yeah, we'll, we'll be able to get it paid back.
Has there been any initial conversations, just real quick, with the, uh, federal agency that's there?
No, no, it's just come up in other conversations, and so we thought, why not introduce it here?
Why not?
Every parking spot's worth about three hundred dollars.
Yeah, yeah, man.
That's what it generates, if there's four people in a car.
Yeah.
That includes the parking, the money they spend, the sales tax.
Yeah.
I think the parking garage makes sense, you're updating your study, I think that makes perfectly good sense, I also really like the concept of deserving the space above it for some type of workforce housing or something that we can help with, so. Uh, I think that, let's do the study, let's figure out whether it makes some sense, if the port can help financially, being an investor with a return, I think that will be really interesting, that's great, yeah. And if you, if it's our key with the. Go ahead.
Uh, it, it was a little delay. I'm already, I'm all the way on the East Coast. Back in two thousand fifteen, the four thousand dollars towards a feasibility study for an ice rink. And, um, we have the potential to build one now. And I'd like to see the look at this as a huge economic opportunity, potentially five, five hundred thousand people a year on a year-round sport arena drink. Probably contact you privately about. And of course, I think we're missing the point on a massive uh, and, uh, I can, an aquatic center that we've been working on hard for the last two years. So that's something we'd also like to see the port partner with us on. We feel like that's a huge opportunity. And those are two huge.
You're breaking up there.
Yeah, you're breaking up, Marco. We're not.
Yeah, I, you know, that's a long signal to travel all the way from.
What was your second item, Marco?
The aquatic center.
Yeah, yeah. Well, as you know, on the aquatic center, just so everybody knows, there's a study going on, uh, the regional port is leading it. We, in fact, Stacy's leading it. Just to let you know, we're not taking a position either forward on. The regional port was contacted and said, you're neutral. Would you do the study and give the facts of it? So that's what we're going to do. We're in the process of doing that. I think at some point in time, that study will be delivered to all the municipalities uh, in Shalane and Douglas County, and they're going to have to decide if they want to proceed with it and what's the district, right? So I think that most people are thinking that the district is not going to include Leavenworth and in Casimir and Shalane, the district will probably end up being City of Anatchi, City of East Anatchi. Maybe some unincorporated Shalane and Douglas County. Those, all of us, two tenths of one percent raises ten million dollars a year. It is a bold, bold amount. If it's just the smaller component, it still raises seven million dollars. So that is a bold, bold amount. So is that just a growth factor of Microsoft coming in? Uh, that's some of it. Yeah. Department of Revenue did the projections for Senator Hopkins. And so he did all of these projections. So we feel like those numbers are pretty reliable. And it's two tenths, right? That's a heavy lift. So we're just going to have to figure out what the study says. You know, I think my, my gut would tell me that it will be some kind of aquatics to sell indoors, probably a fifty-meter swimming pool. Uh, that will make it to the ballot. And I also believe there are going to be indoor, uh, facilities and going to be indoor soccer facilities. Uh, and, uh, I think that's a dominant year around. And so but whether voters want to go two tenths, three percent, that's a, that's a heavy lift in today's economy. Uh, we only have a certain amount of, of years to put it to the voters. There's a sunset clause forming a second one. So we'll have to figure out when that happens. There's two other things that we're going to do to let you know is is we are going to do an economics impact study. Once the models come out, we figure out what it would create in neutrism and most states and all that. And people coming from Western Washington over, right? And then the other thing we're going to do is once we get kind of the model out of what we want to do and what the district might look like. Then I think we are going to do a scientific random sample survey of the taxpayers that can be done in a very reliable manner to say, would you go to the polls and vote two tenths in for X? Now, at that point, we're out. Then the Shalane County commissioners, the cities will have to decide who's in and when to take it to, to the voters.
Is what the Anatchi landing site still the preferred site right now?
You know, I don't know. I, I would think it's got to be in the running for that. The problem is Shelby has got terrible traffic, uh, stuff into it. It'd cost a lot of money to do it. Uh, you know, the other model, and I don't think this other model's going to win out, but just mentioned to you is a decentralized, right? Would it make some sense that having this mega complex invest some money, you know, to public facilities district in different communities? Uh, and float that and that bring other partners in the model that my gut tells me is because of the cost of running facilities, staffing it and all of that. My gut tells me the centralized model will come out more preferred than a decentralized. I'm not doing the study. We'll have to see what comes, comes of it. It'll be interesting to see who's in, who's out, right?
And, and what Arulio was, was alluding to is what you heard me saying multiple times at those initial meetings.
Yeah.
Leavenworth had already started its own feasibility study for an indoor pool, um, months before this idea manifests. So, yeah, that's, that's the project he was talking about.
Yeah. And Jim, it's important to note that the majority of our three million, two and a half to three million visitors a year don't go to Anatchi. They stay here in Leavenworth. So having a decentralized, giving us our own. And I mean, honestly, I think our kids want to compete with the kids in the lower valley. You know, you create that robust sense of competition. And, you know, Cascade High School is very interested in doing some kind of, uh, varsity swim team and giving that opportunity. I mean, it's already evident in our summer swim league that these kids want to have their own team. And that's kind of what I want to give. The visitors don't want to travel half an hour to, you know, enjoy aquatics year round as we're, as we're getting into that. So I was also curious, are you developing a revenue model for that complex?
Well, absolutely. There's not only a revenue model, there's a, uh, M and O model. And those are going to have to align. What I would encourage Leavenworth to do is to stay engaged in the study. Shelby's been in several of the meetings. And if this is something nearing journey of your heart, that, that the public facility district number two help with any public facility here and fund X amount of, uh, indoor, and then if they'll do that for X amount of dollars, you folks will say we're in the district. But you're going to have to play that call. I can't play that part. The, the study's going on. Meet with the consultants. They're sharp, sharp individuals. And let us know what it's going to cost in your indoor pool and what it's going to cost to maintain it. And if that's something that you are absolutely passionate about, then make a decision whether you want to be in the PDF or not. But if you're going to be in and you've got to have the pledge upfront, that X amount of money is going to the Leavenworth Public Pool as one of the indoor facilities going to get to go.
Yeah, it would work as the decentralized.
That would be the decentralized model. Yeah, yeah.
Could you just make one big swimming lane that goes to Anatchi?
That'd be a tough lap.
Float on things.
All right. You can always swim there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jim, I have one more question. You piqued my interest when you spoke about the trades. And, um, what I noticed was, um, you know, that the land is important. Like you said, we need land to let these people start their businesses and, and get them going. I think what's even more important is the people. And we have a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar, um, career and technical, uh, building at Cascade School District. And unfortunately, the school district can only fund one teacher to run that. There's a ton of unused equipment in there, like woodworking and welding and that kind of stuff. And that guy's overwhelmed. And I would be curious to know if you or the, the port would be interested in funding more instruction in that building to help develop more trades. I've been a substitute teacher there. And around that building, and it is mostly unused because they simply don't have the funding for more teachers for that to teach trades, to teach welding and metalwork and small repair and, and those kinds of things. So I would love to see the port jump in and help the school district create more trade opportunities through that building.
Yeah. So I, I'll give you my opinion of how I think the board would look at that. Uh, the board can correct these things they do, but I think I have a good sense of that. I think we would politely decline. Because if we did that with the Leavenworth School District, if you imagine what's going to happen when they come to the next meeting in Casimir and all these other districts, we'd be setting a precedent where we're going to start funding trades in schools.
No, I, I, I. And Marco, I'll, I'll, um, I'll shift that a little bit and say that I, where I see the port is saying, hey, if we're doing some of that trade work here, we could create a space where they could become entrepreneurs, be able to use those trades
Yeah.
in producing something that then again can, can give return. Um, and that's where I think the port could help.
Yep.
Um, is taking those trades and, and helping to, um, solidify them in, in jobs and careers and entrepreneurial, just like you said, that's small workspaces that get people started and so that's where I would say more of where the port would help rather than doing the training themselves.
No, they wouldn't be doing the training, but investing in teachers and teaching.
No, I'm saying they want investments that give return, if you heard him earlier.
Yeah, I did. No, I did hear that. But also I know the port is very focused on investing in nonprofits. And do you invest in businesses, Jim?
We don't, uh, invest correctly in businesses per se by giving them loans or anything. Our Royal is setting their buildings and small fashion shops that give them chances to be successful. So we don't, we don't loan money directly to businesses.
So how do, how do you support businesses or things that are going to give you a return? Because generally nonprofits don't give you a return.
Yeah. So we have a very small amount of our budget, uh, that is set aside for nonprofits. It's forty thousand a year. And we have forty thousand dollars set aside for small municipal, uh, requests to do studies and stuff like that. So forty thousand for nonprofits, forty thousand for startups. That's it. So the rest of it is, is more.
And what about, um, you know, what kind of money do you think we could look at for supporting a sports facility here up in Leavenworth? Like a recreational facility, let's say beyond the, the, um, aquatic center.
Yeah, I think that you folks need to engage with our consultants. And our consultants can sit down, Shelby and others that are interested, uh, they could, they could give you those costs with proper bills and and, uh, indoor facilities. I guess you're doing your study on that. Where is the study in relation to your volume? You know, how far along is it?
Pretty far along, not finalized yet. In fact, we have a request later on tonight to ask for an additional ten thousand dollars to wrap it up and do, um, a public forum for it. But the cost is looking, um, cost estimates are between eighteen and twenty-five million dollars.
That's just your pool?
Yeah.
Okay. I had given our, uh, consultants the study. There was one online. Uh, I know though they're trying to engage with the left part of the community, even the, uh, the sports community and the sports team. So I'll contact you and try and think of who they should connect with, but I should certainly be ready to talk with them as well.
Sure. I did attend one of the focus groups. At that focus group, it was mainly pickleball and softball people who said, please don't do a pool because we don't want our fees going up to support that.
Well, the good news is they had fourteen meetings that they all had.
Yeah, all had a share.
Sure.
It's the best thing in the whole, uh, sports complex that I like. A plan put together, right? Voters get to decide. It's democracy. It enters the district and voters, you tell us your name. It's just, it's just the perfect system. We have our heads hanging to us. We do. It speaks for itself as well.
Yep.
Voters get to decide. It's the greatest, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
The ultimate decision makers. But thanks for coming and.
You're welcome. And, you know, based on this conversation, I think just two things for me to take away. If you're not concerned with me contacting the federal agency, they won't be more happy to start that conversation.
Yes. Tomorrow morning would be great.
Tell it or they're up at night.
Yeah.
I will take that on. It's a responsibility. I will keep Shelby updated on, on that. So that's one, that's one takeaway.
You don't think we should be the party to tee it up?
Here's my, here's my thought. Yeah, here's my thought. I, I, I think, um, I have a pretty good relationship with the congressional. Thanks. The thing is, me as the port are trying to do something for economic development in Leavenworth is not property to do it. We have all these other business models for us here, we're supposed to do things. And we have to help Leavenworth. They deserve to have the port investing in the community. And we flat out have no property to do it. We're right in the middle of a key spot. Let's work with our congressional delegation on another location. Let us transform that side into a fun, funky trades district, uh, that really has economic vitality, uh, maybe.
Sales pitch.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Our city limits are so small.
He's already keyed it up.
Yeah, that's a good.
If they tell me no, then they tell me no. But, uh, I, I, I can push a little bit.
This guy gets more yeses than you. You know, that's why we want him doing this.
Yeah. So I think I'll do that. I'll report back to Shelby and then share with us the parking study when it's done.
Sure.
I think that based on the volume and traffic you folks have, I think there's a way for us to participate in that. And I'm bullish on that. I think we should.
It's great.
Great.
Could they apply for one of our, uh, inspo?
Yes, yes. Yeah. So if you need money, uh, just go online. Uh, regional port authority, uh, it's applicable to municipal, uh, grants and counts. Put one in, get it to us. We'll get you, like, through August twenty.
Oh, wow.
Cover that take. Hey, we're adding tonight. I, I asked for ten.
Yeah, okay.
Ask for ten. Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. That was really informative.
Appreciate it very much. Yeah.
Yep.
Thanks, Jim. I'll come and have a meeting with you.
Yeah, that does it. Yeah. Thank you.
Well, see, I, I think if there's a.
What was that? He said ask for tens, ten million or ten thousand?
All right. That was fruitful, I think. Um, let's move on. We got a multifamily tax exemption. Continued discussion. Got to bring you a draft code here. So.
Be too much.
Lilith?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm really glad to have additional support on this project. Uh, Andrew Bjorn is here today from Burke Consulting. Uh, he has reviewed the draft that's before you. Internally, we have some changes to make to the document. Some of them might be more policy-driven, which we'll walk through tonight. Um, and others will be more procedural. Um, but this document has had some fresh eyes and I appreciate that. Uh, his experience that he brings to the table. I will, um, turn it over to Andrew for you to share who you are with the city council.
Oh, great. Thanks, uh, Lilith. Uh, my name is Andrew Bjorn. I'm a associate principal at Burke Consulting here in Seattle and um, my work has been in a lot of different areas, but, uh, one of the areas in particular we've been focusing on lately has been housing and uh, there've been a number of projects I've been involved with, including some housing action plans across the state. But most recently, we were working with, uh, the uh, the Washington State Department of Commerce on their guidance to local communities on the MFT program. So from that, Mayor, I read a whole lot of, uh, MFT codes across the state and crunched a lot of numbers from different communities, talked with different folks about how they do, uh, the exemption in different areas, what, uh, different communities' goals are, what they found successes with. So, uh, I it, it's a, it's a broad tool. It's something that can be used for a few different things. Um, but um, yeah, I'm, I'm here as a source of potential information. I might not know absolutely everything, but if, uh, if I can't give you the answers right away, I, I know where to look. So.
Thank you, Andrew. Uh, one of the city council's biggest requests at our last meeting on this topic was to talk with the county assessors about foregoing the tax. I have to say that has not been the easiest conversation. I don't know that very many jurisdictions have looked at that, but it appears that there's long-term impacts if you forego. And there are broader impacts to loving and other taxing districts than if it is just a tax shift. And so it could potentially impact like the school district, which would be less impacted with the tax shift, um, as it was presented by Dina Walter. Uh, and, uh, there could be bigger impacts to the fire district and, and those hospital districts and whatnot. So foregoing is still being researched. Um, but our initial, uh, review doesn't look as promising as you might have hoped. So I'll throw that out there just as an FYI. And the document before you, there are a few things I want to touch on tonight, but maybe I just open it up for city council first. If, uh, anybody on the council would like to bring up any questions or issues in this draft code, um, why don't we start there?
But, uh, I've got a quick question just for, for Andrew. Um, have you come across any jurisdiction that asks to, um, just not collect versus the redistribution? Do you know of anyone? Cause it is in, it is in the law that you can do that, but.
Uh, in the law, in what respect? I'm, I'm trying to remember. I don't know what, uh, line and verse. So you might, you might need to remind me.
Well, it was in, it was in a, um, bulletin that came out from Commerce, I think, that said that you can that's, that is an option. I don't, I don't know the specific citing inverse, but again, it didn't come out with that way. And I'm just curious and, and curious how that how that would negatively impact other districts more than, um, than. How that would negatively impact other districts more than, um, than. The shift does.
Yeah. Um, so I, I, I might repeat things that have already been talked about, but just so that I can, I can, uh, kind of give you a. Uh, a narrative here. Um. A lot of people, when talking about the MFT program, just ask where the money comes from, that it's an exemption, but. Who, who essentially pays for it? And as you've seen from the different materials, uh, that it, it's from a combination of two different things. One is that. The tax obligation can get shifted over to other property taxpayers in individual taxing districts. The other is that, uh, the individual taxing districts just don't collect as much, uh, revenue from property taxes. Um. What proportion is, um, experienced? Is very dependent on the ways that assessors, um, work under our property tax system. In that it's all covered under the, uh, levy limit. That the state has a particular levy limit that restricts the growth in levies that can be collected for existing property. Now that's the whole, that's the main thing that just drives everything. If it were, if that were not in place and cities could. Determine their own levies as they saw fit, they could dial up or down, um. Uh, the allocation as necessary, but because this happens. Assessors need to put in new, um, real estate value. Uh, by July first of every year, and that includes properties under construction. So the whole thing that kind of drives this is really that. A lot of the. Property that will have their property taxes forgiven contributes to the levy lid, but, and that can. Um, increase the taxes for everyone, including, you know, the site that's under construction. And then, once those taxes are exempted, um, that obligation is just spread over. Everyone else or depending on how much that levy lid increases. So that's, that's kind of like the, the highly technical version of all of this. Where it gets to be challenging is that, um. It's very hard to pull out the individual effects that an exemption would have on. Um, property taxes in different districts, because it depends on a lot of different things, including. Uh, what the assessed value would be after, um, after the exemption takes place. Um. It, it's, it's, when we've talked with assessors about this, it's a very difficult calculation to make. Cities could theoretically decide to voluntarily lower. The amount of property taxes that they collect with some basic estimate. But it's not going to be precise, and it's also not something that. Um. That other jurisdictions may look to do. Now. One other thing to note here, just so that I can get it all out and we can, we can continue with the questions, is that the different jurisdictions will. Experience these effects in different ways, and I'm just going to show my screen here just to show one figure. Um. If you're looking at where money comes from for different jurisdictions. It's distinctly different depending on what kind of district you're looking at. The dark blue line represents the amount of money that comes in from property taxes to each type of. Taxing district. And what you notice here is that there are certain districts that are heavily dependent on property taxes to function. So a library district, for example, is far more dependent on property taxes in aggregate. Then, you know, uh, um, like a mosquito district or, uh, weed controlled district. This also needs to be taken into account, like if you're, if you're losing revenue. That's, that, that's a, that's a bad thing regardless of what district you're looking at, but from a relative basis. Each of these different types of districts are going to experience that in different ways. I can, I can provide a version of this later to, uh, to Lilith so that, uh, you can take a look at this at a later point, but. Um. I think to answer your question though. Cities can have some level of control over how it would impact your own taxation. But because this is dependent on the county assessor and their processes that they're mandated to do by law. Um. There isn't a lot of room to control how it impacts other districts.
So if, if this is, if we're talking new construction.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's added value.
Yeah.
Is, is. Are those other taxing districts, they would see an increase generally in new construction? Am I correct? So would there? I mean, if, if they didn't get it. It wouldn't necessarily mean it would go down, it just wouldn't go up?
It, it's very highly dependent on the situation, so I, I, we, um. There may be some examples that I can point towards, and I've been, I've been looking through a few that I can provide. But. It's not as simple as saying that all of the money that will effectively be received as an incentive. As taxes that. Uh, a property owner won't need to pay. Will just be, uh, revenue that all the different taxing districts wouldn't get. So it's, it, it, there is some offset by the fact that that obligation is passed to other, other property taxpayers.
Marco, you have your hand up?
Marco?
Sorry, I had mute. I'm sorry to take my video off. I just, um, I think my signal works better, my. Yeah. So my question is, um, in the middle of the, uh, packet where it discusses in thirty-one, three. Point four, one, point zero, three, oh, the terms of the tax exemption for multifamily housing. That first, uh, that first point you have there, could this entire, could this entire, um, uh. Policy be combined with an inclusionary policy? Cause essentially what it's doing. In this first, uh, section here is, is saying, hey. We're gonna, uh, we're gonna make twenty percent of the multifamily housing units as affordable housing units. So could we mandate this and, and weave it into an inclusionary policy which we're looking at? In other words, use it as an incentive, saying, hey, we're doing this inclusionary policy, but we're giving you something back. We're giving you a tax exemption. And in other words, instead of making this voluntary, make it mandatory.
Uh, that's an excellent point. Andrew brought that up today in our discussions, and he says the inclusionary zoning. Can benefit from this type of program also being in the books because it. Encourages developers to utilize both tool, tools together.
Well, if Andrew brought it up, then I guess he's the first guy and he's got the great mind, so I'm happy to.
Lilith is great to work with, so it's, I mean, the, the ordinances come together, uh, pretty well. Um, there are examples, for instance, on the, uh. Um. With respect to mandatory inclusionary zoning and MFT with, uh. It's mainly, uh, Kirkland and Redmond are the best examples, but there are certainly other communities that have implemented that. Seattle does, Seattle's kind of a weird example to pull out because they're. Um, they're not very representative. They use MFT a lot. They're responsible for over half of the. Um, uh, MFT, uh, the exemptions issued in the state, but. It, they're, they're different, a different beast, but looking at Kirkland and Redmond, they put together a pretty good program there.
Cause we have this inclusionary process in process, we're, we're developing it, and. If we could expedite it by combining the two, I would be excited for that.
I don't, I don't know that we'll be expediting it, but, um, as far as adoption timeline, but. They definitely, they go through different processes. But to save time today, uh, are there other questions from the council on this draft ordinance before we run through some of the headline, highlights?
You're gonna be able to, uh, Lilith, so essentially what we're asking. Is that. We're asking them to build, let's say twenty percent. Twenty percent of those units. We're asking them to build that. What are they not? What are we not picking up from them? I guess I was gonna ask. What property tax wouldn't we collect if we had them do that? Do you know what, what they wouldn't be paying on those units?
Well, it depends on how they're built. So, one of the discussions Andrew and I had today, which clarified some other public discussion that's been. Had on this topic earlier is if it's multiple buildings on the same property. Can they be utilized for this exemption? So say they put all of the affordable units. That are going to fall under this program into one building. That would be the easiest. Then that entire building, that entire building is off the tax rolls for the. Stated time period, twelve or twenty years. And then you periodically, I thought it was annual because our assessor has, wants, wants us to do it annually. But, you know, maybe it doesn't have to be, which would be better, but in any case, periodically you check back with them and make sure everything's operating correctly. Um, the more complex way is if it's just a portion of a building. And you itemize out the cost per unit or. The cost of that section of the building, depending on how they put it together, you work with your ass- assessor. And that portion of the building is exempt from property tax. But the remainder of the building or any mixed use, because a lot of these are. In bigger cities have been associated with mixed use development. Um, and ideally it'd be great if a building was created downtown that had mixed use, commercial and. And residential together, but in any case. That's how it's divided out is by, by the affordable units, and if they're within a building, that's just a portion of the building that is tax exempt. Did, did that answer your question, Zeke?
Well, I was wondering, say, if you just kept it simple and you had a fourplex, four units, that just, that was your. Twenty, twenty percent or your twenty-five percent. And so they build it, they just don't pay any taxes. And we get it built for whatever property taxes they don't pay. Sounds like, I mean, that's. Oversimplification, but it sounds like, wow, you know, like. For what they're not going to bring, what they don't pay us in property taxes, they build a fourplex that remains affordable. Um, that's kind of how I've been sort of looking at this. Seems like, that's kind of a win-win.
I, I think it really does come down to a win-win, and if you go back and you look at Dina Walter's numbers. The unit price per affordable unit is nothing the city could build it for.
Right.
Um, and it may not be forever in that affordable category, which is another misconception that we had. In earlier discussions, so, um, I wanted to throw that out there as well this evening is that. Permanent affordability is not what the RCW is talking about, um, for this exemption. Permanent, permanent by definition in this section of the state code, def- is. Defining the length of stay in which someone resides in that unit. In other words, it cannot.
You froze.
We froze.
I, I could, I could fill in because I, I know how she was going to end it.
Yeah.
With, with respect, with respect to the way that. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Andrew.
Um, with respect to the way that the code is, uh, the code draft is, the ordinance draft, I should say, is currently written. Uh, there is a section in there about permanent, um, residence and what you're about to say. Uh, Lilith, I didn't mean to steal your thunder, is that, um, it's defined in a few different ways, but it's mainly to make sure that MFT. Buildings are not being used as Airbnbs.
That's what.
Yeah.
It's in heroin, no.
Short-term rentals.
Yeah.
So there was a, yeah, yeah, so there was a little misunderstanding about what that meant, um, so we will.
That's what it means is permanent occupants, not.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Permanent in affordability.
Yeah.
The, um. Well, and, and again, um, I think what would. Be helpful is if, if it really isn't an option, or say if we forego our share of the taxes, we know our share of the taxes is only ten percent. Roughly eleven percent, um, the property tax, so ninety percent of it. We don't control, we don't have, so even if we say we'll forego. It leaves ninety percent of that tax that still gets redistributed is what I'm hearing.
Or lost.
Okay.
Or lost, okay, well, that's what, that, that's a crucial difference, if, if it can be lost or. I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, I should, I should just raise, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I should just raise a quick point. The way that the statute is written. It says that the city has the power to eliminate all property taxes. Um, there isn't a provision in there that allows just to forgive the, uh, just to exempt the city's portion of it. I'm sorry about the confusion. I was, I, I wasn't sure where you were going, uh, the last time, which is why I was trying to, trying to feel. Feel my way through and, and, and get you the answer that you needed. Um, there are other programs, I think, that allow for just the city's portion to be forgiven, or, or I say forgiven, exempted. Um. But in this case, it's, it's kind of all or nothing. I don't know of cases where communities just exempt their own portion and leave. Like the Port District and the, the, uh, you know, the, um. Uh, the county's portion, for example, uh, on the. Um, uh, out of the exemption, so.
So when you talk about permanent affordability, what are we talking about? It's not forever, it's what, fifty years or what is it?
No.
It's the twelve or twenty.
Twelve or twenty, that's what we're talking about.
Right, okay. Yeah, so with, with respect to both of those, um, with the twelve-year. The intent is to preserve rental housing, and there is the potential to include an extension, which means that you can get up to twenty-four years of. Affordability using the twelve-year, uh, the twelve-year exemption plus the twelve-year extension. At twenty-four years, that, uh, that property is probably depreciated enough so that it. Either, uh, needs some additional, uh, rehab work or, you know, is otherwise. Um, more affordable if it's just out on the open market. The twenty-year option provides a twenty-year exemption from property taxes. But it, it's, it's because it's required to. Um. Essentially. Provide twenty-five percent of those units to a, an affordable housing provider. Those units can be maintained as affordable in the long term. And that, this is all owner, like the twenty years intended for owner occupied housing, so home buyers can come in. And there would just be essentially a condition on the sale of the, uh, uh, a condition on title that would require them to sell it. At an affordable price. So the twenty-year does provide permanent affordability through sale. The twelve-year is intended for kind of a twelve or twenty-four year period where you have affordable rental housing.
So the, so the twenty years allows you to, in twenty years, you still have to sell it for an affordable price, is that right?
It's in perpetuity, according to the statute.
Oh, really?
It's, but the, the challenge, like the, the MFT program, it, it's. It's amazing because when you describe the program, it sounds really simple, and then there are all these little complexities associated with it. Um, the twenty years just intended as a way of preserving affordability for homeownership. Once somebody buys it, you know, they can, you know, they can win the lottery and they don't need to sell it. They, it, it, it's not really dependent on someone's ongoing income. It's just at sale, it needs to be. Uh, at an affordable price to a qualified buyer. So that's how that's maintained, um, and that's, that's. Long-term. Because that's being controlled by something like a community land trust that would control the. Not a community land trust, like in the case of a condo probably, but, um. If it was a housing authority or a nonprofit housing organization that would. Be able to manage that and have some control or, or some oversight. be able to manage that and have some control or, or some oversight, they'd just be able to ensure that the property didn't go, wasn't sold at market rate.
So essentially, it, it is similar in, to a community land trust in that you're talking about a deed restriction that would come with that unit.
Yeah.
But the, the, but the initial um, way to get there is twenty years of, of exemption from property tax.
Yeah, and i- it's actually more similar to what Habitat for Humanity does. It's a, like the legal requirements are a little bit different, but, um, but yeah, it, it's essentially just ensuring that over the long term, it's, it's affordable to buy.
Uh, Sharon and then Clint.
Okay. As we go down all these winding paths, you're talking about the bottom line, multifamily tax exemption program or multi-family tax means I'm going to pay it. I'm going to pay someone else's property tax. Is that the bottom line to all these other things that you're winding around with?
It's a small, it's, it's a small portion. Yeah. So we've talked about that before and how it's just a portion of the property tax. And for a limited period of time, and it's based on your assessed value. So in Leavenworth, as Dina explained, the majority of the tax shift is going to be felt if it is implemented with the commercial district. Because their values are higher.
You know, the written, the commercial district, if you do it, I don't care what districts, if you were putting this on the taxpayers, I have stated that unless there is an opt-out and I can opt-out, I do not want to pay one penny of anyone else's taxes. Because then somebody else does it now, it's four pennies, somebody else, I mean, it's, I, I don't think that's fair, and I don't think it's fair to put on the taxpayers in the community. And that's, I, I've said that before. So I just wanted to figure out, oh, you're winding around up there. That was the bottom line. We're still, the, the people that live here are still going to pay for the property tax people here. Okay.
It looks that way. Even if we don't collect some of it, the rest of it would get redistributed, right?
Yes, it, it seems to be the impact. We're going to continue to look at that foregone option and, and its long-term impact. So hopefully we can give you a, a broader picture of that. Uh, Clint.
Yeah, I mean, the, actually Sharon, thanks for teeing this up. I think this is more of a follow-up question to what you said. So let's just say we approve this. Will this be an option for developers then without any further input from council? Or will we be able to approve this on a case-by-case basis? Or will this be purely administrative decision moving forward? I ask because I think our community's willingness to bear these additional tax costs will be predicated frankly on how much more they'll be forced to pay. So, I mean, put another way, folks I think would be much more willing to bear the burden for a smaller number of units as opposed to say if the upcoming Widener Apartments wanted to take us up on the offer and there is a much larger tax burden that would be off-shifted towards the community. So if we approve this, who makes the final call moving forward?
So the,
Yeah.
The section oh-six-oh talks about the application review and i- issuance. So it's a community development director who reviews the application for completeness. But that's, uh, to the extent that my job would be involved in the beginning, then it would go to the city council. Uh, for, for your guys' determination. And we have criteria outlined there based on state law that the council would be asked to weigh the proposed.
This project by project.
So case by case then? Yeah.
I think so.
Both A and B under one-six-oh state that she does her work and then she brings it to you. And then you may decide to do it forward or not.
Thanks. I appreciate that it was buried in there. I just wanted to make sure for everyone that was unambiguous and that was on the table.
Marco. Next up.
Okay. So quickly, just what would that look like if you distributed, let's say, the Widener Apartments? That was a great example, Clint. Widener Apartments came in and, you know, we've, we graced them with an exemption of a, just going to make the math easy, a hundred thousand dollars of annual tax was exempted because the Widener Apartments engaged in this program. And that hundred thousand dollars was then having to be redistributed, that potential tax, which we may not charge anyway, but we would still be giving them service is how I understand it. You know, the services that taxes pay for. How would that one hundred thousand dollars then be redistributed? In other words, what would it look like per household type of thing? And, and saying, you know, it would go up, it would make everyone else's tax go up by five cents per thousand or something like that. Do, do we have a ballpark for that?
The, the way it's distributed and what we've talked about last year with Dina Walters was a twenty million dollar project. And the twenty million dollar project essentially equated it into a shift of two hundred thousand or so dollars to the rest of the taxpayers. But that shift will change based on the values of everybody's property. So a property that is, say, I don't know, ten million dollars, like the Post Hotel, then they're going to pay a higher percentage of that shift than a property owner who has a five hundred thousand dollar valued home. Now, the, and Dina was resident, resonant, not happy to actually do any more detailed math because it is so complex. And because it does change year to year. And as Andrew was indicating too, there may be other impacts for that number to other jurisdictions. So when you start digging down to the bottom number, it's almost, it's very difficult to project what the actual impact is, is what I got from Dina.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Lilith. And my main reason for asking that isn't to put you on the spot. But it's to get a feel for, is, is this a significant amount of levy that would increase in terms of cents per thousand? And so if you gave me a number that was in terms of how many cents per thousand evaluated property, I would get a better feel for how much a resident would be paying more or less, like we do in the PRSA. Because if it's insignificant, if it's a few cents, I wouldn't actually care. But if it's a dollar, yeah, I would care. So I, I, because I have a value for affordable housing.
If, if you assume that the city of Leavenworth, and maybe Chantel has this number somewhere in her head, uh, what is the total assessed values of all properties in the city of Leavenworth? And then divide that by two hundred thousand. You, you could get that number per thousand, what is the assessed value? Uh, Chantel, do you have a ballpark figure?
Seven hundred million.
Seven hundred million? And two hundred thousand gets distributed among all of it? What's it come down to per thousand?
You guys are math wizards.
Well, Chantel is.
Let's, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put in here too, that what we're talking about, even if it's the Widener though, is not a twenty-four million dollar project that would be exempt. We're talking about thirty units that they, she, they gave us a rough estimate of, well, this has been a few years ago when we first talked to them, about hundred eighty-five to two hundred thousand per unit. So we're talking about a three million dollar exemption, not a twenty-four million dollar exemption. So the taxes on that three million dollar portion, again, is going to be significantly smaller than what she used as her. But that's, that's all I want to say is that, so you wouldn't be using two hundred thousand for that three million dollar.
Right.
Things continue to morph. Anyway, what?
I'm sorry, that's just what I was getting at. I just wanted to make sure that when we were looking at this, we understood the perspective of how much it was going to cost. Because I wouldn't say that I'm not willing to spend anything of my taxes on affordable housing, because I think most of us have a, have a, um, a, you know, a vested interest in that.
I'd like to try to explain something. We're, we're really focused on uh, the money right now, but I think, you know, we are in agreement that affordable housing is really important for our community for a lot of different reasons. So that we can support the service industry downtown that fuels our economic engine. So that we can have nurses, so that we can have teachers. So we're all in agreement that affordable housing is important. I don't want to forget that because we're talking about nickel, stikes, dollars. And I think when it comes to passing a levy, say it's for the schools, somebody without children or somebody that's retired might still opt-in to pay for schools because they believe that that is important for our community. So I don't think we should be totally scared off by the idea that we're going to pay, but we're already agreeing to spend two hundred thousand dollars a year as a city on affordable housing, which is a lot of money. And we're, we're, we're approving that without nearly this kind of fuss. So the money comes from somewhere. If it comes from the federal government, guess what? It's your tax dollars. It's your, it's your income, it's whatever, it's.
Right.
I don't think we should be afraid of a cost when we agree on funding our singular highest priority. I agree with Marco, it depends. There's a range of acceptance, but to think that I would shoot something down because it would cost me five cents more per thousand dollars on my property tax, I think there's probably more of a tolerance from that than we think. But, um, I just want to make that point. Really getting caught up in the math and a fear of our property taxes going up, but we're talking about our single, single most important priority. Yeah.
Yeah. I just think it's, um, it's just important to know what it is.
I, it's, it, I know.
Because people are going to want to know. I want to be able to tell them, but I think what you said is right on.
I agree.
And, and, and that's, and that's, yeah, I didn't want to say because it is so complex, but what I want to say is we could get a rough estimate. It could be a ballpark. She didn't want it because she doesn't, she feels like as the assessor, she doesn't want to commit and then be wrong. We're not needing that level of sp- spes- that, 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 that. We, we just need to know roughly. Are we talking, like you said, five cents? Are we talking a dollar a thousand?
Three point five. But see, you know, kind of that point was Jason was saying. I look at it as generational. When I was a kid, the orchard is paid to have a school here, so I'd go to school. I don't have kids at school anymore, but guess what? I gave it back to the next generation through. So if it's a, it's a cost, I get it. But it's also reinvestment into our community, into the community, if it can be done correctly. But my question a little on that is, let's say the fourplex is the four units out of a development. Does that building get assessed on every round? Or do they just not assess it? Because I thought I heard Andrew say that when the twelve years is over, it's hard to kind of come back and reassess that.
Oh. I, I can jump in a little really quickly on that. Um, so the way that the law works is that once that twelve years is expired, once the MFT is over, um, it just, it's like, um, I'll, I'll spare the incredibly, uh, uh, nuanced and technical kind of language in the statute and just say, it just added back like nothing had happened. So it's reassessed. Um, the land underneath the property, in addition to any commercial improvements, is still taxed. So you know, that, it, it's not as if a property owner with an MFT, uh, with an MFT will not be paying any property taxes at all. And in some cases, just simply improving the property and improving the, you know, uh, building up the neighborhood can actually improve land prices in the area as well.
But my question is, does those units still get assessed, even though it's not taxed? So how do we know or how does it develop or know that this is really working?
How it really working in terms of, you know, how much they're not paying?
Correct. So.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the big question because if the, uh, uh, this is hard to explain, hard to define here. If they were not exempted, there would be a different levy rate than if they were because of that shifting of tax obligation. So it, it's, it's hard to say. That's one of the reasons why it's so complex, because it's, it's not simply just saying, you know, we'll just multiply what we think that your property is worth. And typically that's just included in the assessment anyway, even if it's not taxable. They still assess the value of the property. Uh, they still give a, an, an assessment of the value of the property because of, uh, the requirements under the, um, uh, under the statute. But, um, but yeah, it's, um, but generally, I mean, if it seemed, so overall, it seems like you're looking for a general ballpark figure about what the impacts would be on both ends. What would be the actual benefits that would be provided by a developer? Uh, provided to a developer slash property owner and how much would be the cost that you would be facing?
Those are, yes.
Yeah. So I mean, when we, when we've done general calculations on the basis of that, I mean, it, it for affordable units, it amounts to, um, you know, about, um, like it depends on the unit, it depends on the community and everything. But if you're looking at uh, subsidizing the affordable units in the property, I mean, it can be on, on the order of ten to twenty, uh, thousand dollars per year, if you're assuming that, um, uh, a rental property and that all the exemption is going to offset the, the reduced rent. So that's a pretty big deal. And that's something that can actually have a pretty considerable impact. This is the biggest incentive that local communities can provide for affordable housing. You know, unless you're, um, unless you're providing a direct, uh, you know, uh, direct subsidy. So I don't know if that quite answered your question. I, I don't know if I went off into the weeds a bit there, but, um, does that kind of get to where you were?
I think we're going to have to wrap this up. We need to do, but yeah, we need to get a quick break before our next meeting. But what we'll, what we'll need to do is still explore what this foregoing would include or not include. Um, and then do get some kind of rough idea of what we're talking about in terms of what, what the shift would be. And those two things I think can help move this forward. Um, but we're running out of time now. So, um, thank you, Andrew, for, thank you for helping us through and Lilith for bringing us.
Appreciate it.
And we'll continue the discussion. And we'll take a quick break and come back for our regular meeting.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thanks, Andrew.
Do I have anything to say tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. I will call the meeting of the Leavenworth City Council for August eighth and quarter. Please stand for the flag salute. And would you start?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, in the faithful, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, roll call.
Sharon Waters.
Clint Strand.
Jason Lundgren.
Anne Hesper.
Zeke Reister.
Marco Aurelio.
T-Ball. All right, everybody's here with Marco participating by via Zoom. Um, we'll move to the consent agenda, but I have a number of amendments for you. We are adding an action item number fourteen, resolution thirteen, twenty twenty-three. And that is for an emergency hyper prepared that we do not want to wait. So that's item fourteen. Uh, action item fifteen do is improve and increase for the NAC architects for the feasibility study contract. And that was just alluded to in our study session. And it looks like maybe we'll have even some funding to help that. But that's item fifteen. Sixteen, ordinance sixteen seventy-nine, local program financing. And that is again, um, having to deal with our public works financing, right?
Yes.
Chantel, and that's what we've already know about, but it's time to get it in place. And then replacing executive session regarding wages and collective bargaining with a closed meeting under RCW forty-two thirty-one forty-four B. Just reclassifying that um, as a closed meeting rather than executive session. And just to explain the difference, executive sessions, there can be no mention of what takes place. A closed session, there may be. We don't know, but we're, you're not under the same strict guidelines. It will be without the public, but it's not. So anyway, I hope you get that. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as I mentioned with so many changes that it's probably, doesn't look like the same one.
I have a quick question.
What?
Um, under claims tab four, I have two questions.
Okay.
So tab four, let me get there. Believe it or not, I'm almost there.
Almost there.
Okay, um, the total, uh, okay, I'm sorry. It's on page eight, at the top, the, um, it's in, oh, it's NAC.
Mm-hmm.
There's fifteen thousand eight hundred and five dollars and twenty-seven cents. Is that part of the seventy thousand or add into the seventy thousand?
That's part of.
That's part of.
That's just part payment of that.
Okay, and my other question is on page.
And they're still under, uh, below their contract.
They're still below, okay. My other question is on page eleven, down at the bottom. It says recording fees for Welcome and AFN number blah blah blah. I don't know, what is that?
So it's the Welcome and uh, company.
Okay.
And our department did a recording of a document that they paid for through their permit fees.
Oh, that, that they paid for?
We've, we've been paid upfront and then we went and.
And then, okay, all right.
Re-recorded.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Still moved.
Seconded.
Moved by keyboard seconded. I heard Jason first, that's because he's closest. Um, all those in favor, let me see your hands. Marco, are you participating? Oh, okay.
Could I just do a quick?
Oh, what?
I, for some reason, I'm not remembering that we had canceled the August twenty-second meeting.
That's in here.
It's in the consent.
So that's in sticks?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, and that's.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Right.
So, all right.
Now, and, and the reason was because we have the barbecue that we can, yeah. We've done that before. All right. So we passed that. Now we're going to comments from the public on items not on the agenda.
Everybody, you got something on, on the agenda, come on up. Um, I may, I'd like to just, I'm argumentative, so when I hit it, I wrote it down so that you don't.
Oh.
We don't have to debate, I just want to.
Yeah, well, this isn't our debate time anyway, so.
Thanks, Elmer.
This is for your comment.
We don't have enough time for that.
So, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Good stock paper you're using.
Yeah, well.
Good stuff. I, I, I go to Costco and Apple Tree, so.
Yeah, thanks.
I was gonna shake hands, Paul.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I, I even have this. I, I was gonna comment, I, I like the carving, that's really nice. I don't know who did that. Okay, um, I just take a few minutes here. Charlie, you sent this out and, and uh, it got my attention that you folks are still moving on that. Parking down there. I feel strongly that uh, that's not the appropriate place. Uh, I think parking to me is so crucial. It's a, quite a branch. We don't have it downtown. We're losing it. The front street and all of such, and so, um, if, if we don't keep, it's like no lumber town. When the tree's foot coming and the mill's closed. If we don't have it convenient and easy for people to park, then our customers, the mill's gonna close, frankly. Um, and I think the talk of outlying areas uh, for parking, Chump Stick or something is, is non, non-functional. I mean, you'd have to run a shovel from daybreak to the bars closed, and then just people aren't gonna be comfortable. Anyhow, I, I, I put a lot of this stuff down on here. I don't wanna take a lot of your time. I'm not against affordable housing. In fact, I, I did know what my thoughts around that. I think that in the middle of the upper valley, everybody came together and built something there. We got a great bus line, the link system, and it opens the door for those folks to work when at you or Kegner. And, and what it actually, uh, something into Shasen Drive, it could really add a real boost to their economy. That's essentially, I, I don't wanna debate, uh, I would love to debate, but I know.
You know what? Let's sign you up. We can debate, but not during a council.
So anyhow, I tried to put my thoughts down here and I hope you give it some consideration. I just honestly believe that the festival proximity is so valuable to, to that function of the festival. And, and the well-being of the community, uh, parking out one end, parking at the other, great opportunity. But I, I hope you don't, uh, move so.
But we're, you know, we're involved in a, in redoing that parking study and part of it is to look at that a parking facility and where that might be located and stuff. So that's still an ongoing discussion that you can participate in too.
Okay, you know, there's a real advantage to that, with that. I noted here, the triangle out there really opens up some, some opportunities. So good that the ramps outside your core parking area, places for your mom parking space, you don't lose a lot of interior. And during construction time, and actually a good place for equipment and stuff, not impacting the town so much as they construct. So, I think it's invaluable opportunity to keep the flat out there for Ferris wheels and other. It, it's great for, for home shows or camping. We've had use of the festival in the past for, um,
Yeah.
Uh, outdoor facilities and they have trailers and air fishing boats and everything else. So it's really a great opportunity to enhance the festival, the flat. Someday, city may have to look at parking underneath that or, or some sort of structure. But anyhow, I just, I feel so tired about the parking. I just wanted to get that back on your.
Sure.
Well, and the port was here earlier. You missed it. The port was here earlier to talk about parking too.
Yeah.
They, they want to invest in the town, the port. And one of the main goals is parking, that's where the revenue's at, so.
Yeah.
They weren't here today. So, yeah.
And, and frankly, the hotel motel taxes, that's one thing you could use for that. I tried what, four or five years ago to get some started in that area and we weren't successful. Uh, but uh, I, that's still an opportunity to start doing some design work and stuff right off the top.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, we're not saying, thanks, I'll enjoy reading.
Elmer, could you make sure I get an email copy of that, Elmer?
Standing ovation, drops mic. Okay, uh, anybody else wanna have comments on items not on our agenda?
I know.
I'm looking for people unmuting and I'm not seeing any unmuting. Okay, then we're gonna move on to resolutions, ordinance orders and other business. Item seven. Resolution ten, twenty twenty-three, public records policy update. Andrea, that's you.
It's me. I get to talk.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so in June, I went to a, uh, the Clark Institute uh, to learn to do my job better. And one of the things that they really impressed upon us was creating a public, a public record policy. We didn't already have one. We did already have one. Chen Paul created a fantastic one. Um, and so, but they also encouraged us to update it. And so, seeing as our jobs have separated, um, I, I just took care of all that. And I went through all the RCWs and made sure everything was still correct and still, um, applicable. And um, just kind of made a few, um, changes as far as like mediums for recording and stuff. We don't use CDs or sets any longer, so. Felt like that, that would be a good time to take those out. So anyway, those are just the changes that we made and, or I made and, you know. Any questions?
I'll make a motion, okay? Leavenworth City Council moves to approve resolution ten, twenty twenty-three, public records policy update.
Second.
Okay.
By Jason, seconded by Anne. Any other questions? Marco, did you say something?
I said second, but.
Yeah, he, he was too late.
Okay.
You might as well just forget it because you're too, uh, by the time it comes from vacuum.
He was first, but it took.
Yeah, right, yeah. I'm not gonna factor in the delay, so. All those, let me, let me see your hand. Okay, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, item eight, resolution eleven, twenty twenty-three, naming the street Autumn Strasse. Lilith?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, City Council, you are being asked to consider a new name for the new street between Titus and Chum Stick. The first half of this will be developed as part of the Leavenworth Meadows project and that multifamily project that we've been talking about for quite some time. Uh, and the owners of the property have proposed Autumn Strasse, which was reviewed by the fire district, emergency services and Shalane County and found to be a valid viable name for the street. Uh, so with that, we are making the formal request to the city council that this be the name of the street. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Well, the request was by who for sure?
Uh, the.
Property.
Oh, the wider apartments, that one too, there, okay.
That's the.
But make sure.
Yeah, Lilith, I do have one question. Um, in the Bavarian theme, could we change the name from autumn to the German word for autumn, which is Herbst, H-E-R-B-S-T? That's just a suggestion. Cause other, other names are German.
Herbst. Herbst.
Herbst, H-E-R-B-S-T, which is the German word for autumn.
I think it's really our responsibility.
Well, I can tell you, living on my street, which is Alpen Strasse, it's a night. Some of your address. I'm not kidding you. Spell it. What does it mean? It's a street, just.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think le- leaving it a mix would be just fine.
You're, you're, I, I, I see what you're trying to get at, but trust me, go with the autumn.
I get it. I'm just trying to help us stand out as a Bavarian town.
I, I get it.
Well, if it was downtown, that would be, uh, again, more appropriate where our residential isn't in that same.
Anyway, the EMS might happen.
Yeah.
They, they, they didn't have a problem with that, with the downtown.
Yeah.
Because if you notice, we have some signage up and you have Ninth Street and then you have what the conversion is.
Yeah.
And yeah, the Rivercom and Fire District were not in favor of the German names.
Okay.
Exactly.
That's good enough for me.
Yep.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve resolution twelve dash twenty twenty-three, naming a city street Alpen Glow Drive.
No, I guess. Laben, we're on.
We're on eight.
Oh, we're on eight.
Motion.
I scrolled to the wrong one. I rescind that motion. And I'm starting over. I apologize. Leavenworth City Council moves to approve resolution eleven dash twenty twenty-three, naming a future city street, Autumn Strasse.
Second.
Okay, moved by Anne, seconded by Sharon. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. And we got opposed. And, okay, Marco, okay, six, seven to one.
But here's my point, is that even if we don't name it Bavarian, I would suggest that the city in future street naming might consider honoring the Native Americans who owned this land before we did and start looking at that.
Well, some of those names might give trouble to the first responders as well, but.
Maybe they should go back to school.
Um, we'll move on to question item number nine, resolution twelve, twenty twenty-three, naming Alpen Glow Drive.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, council members. Alpen Glow ended up being pre-approved. Um, I hope that you agree to retain the name. Um, we did a short plat uh, and a portion of this road was included in that. Rivercom and all the appropriate agencies reviewed it at that time and approved it. But now with the larger development and this came to our attention, uh, we are bringing it to the city council uh, to formally adopt in a proper format. Uh, so with that, um, we're just humbly asking that you retain the name Alpen Glow Drive for the McDevitt Plat.
That's very German. I like it.
The Leavenworth City Council moves to approve resolution twelve dash twenty twenty-three, naming a city street Alpen Glow Drive.
Second.
Yeah, okay. Sharon got it in first again.
I wish this latter, I think.
By, seconded by Sharon. Uh, any other questions? All in favor, let me see your hand. It passes unanimously. Okay, another ordinance sixteen seventy-seven, amending, uh, Leavenworth Municipal Court code section fourteen, ten, oh five five, on exempt signs. Lilith?
I'll take this one.
Oh, okay, let's go, Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, at the council's July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting, the council requested staff to bring forward for consideration and ordinance amending the sign regulations of Leavenworth Municipal Code to prohibit political election signs within the right of way of Highway Two, which is consistent with DOT, uh, state law. And require the written consent of abutting property owners when such signs are placed within a city's right of way. Um, the changes were made to section O, uh, fourteen point ten point oh five five, exempt signs, section O. It reads now, such signs are allowed within city right of way only and not in the managed right of way of US Route Two where they are prohibited. Provided that for allowed signs, the owner of the abutting property, as identified in the records and role of the Shalane County Assessor, consents to such placement in writing and such allowed signs shall not be located on sidewalks or other travel ways. And at no time shall allowed signs block or obstruct safe side distance and or become a nuisance hazard and or danger to the public as determined by the Public Works Department. So this was at the request of council at your last meeting. Um, this is the language that, um, our city attorney and I came up with. You know, I do want to point out that this will impact signs that are placed in the designated sign area under section fourteen point ten point two hundred. These will not be, so within your packet, you see those designated sign areas. We could address this section of the code at a later date if you so choose. Um, right now, as you look at these designated sign areas, several of them, many of them are within the, um, highway right of, uh, Highway Two right of way and political election signs will not be allowed in those locations. Um, and they will need to get political election signs, campaign signs, will need to get abutting property owner permission or replace them within the remaining DSA's. So that would begin Crystal, um, Restaurants permission for the Ski Hill Drive designated sign area and getting Tom Lynn's permission for First Street and the Chump Stick Road designated sign areas. Um, and I suppose getting, um, the property with the pool at the Evan Street designated sign area, but that one is a billboard sign. So it's not something that he generally put, um, uh, ground signs on anyway. That's only allowed to be on that, um, posting on the support.
Isn't that in city right of way?
It's, it is, it's in with it, so. So.
Wouldn't that be more the city?
It would be.
Cause that's kind of our parking lot.
Right now, that sign is advertising the phase two wastewater treatment, phase three wastewater treatment project. So I can't see it, like, placing their sign on top of that.
And it's asphalt.
It is, but there's a, there's a sign there. It's still, you could, brown sign, so it's little pin signs, the campaign signs aren't allowed there anyway. It's DSA, this DSA is on a structure.
But you could put a sign down near it in the dirt, the wall.
I could, I can hear you.
You could put a sign down here instead.
Down where?
Near it, on the wall or in the grass right beside it.
So then, sure, the sign, he said you could put it on the grounds, near it.
Near it.
But actually, this DSA, if you look at the, if you look what's for you, posting on support structure only. In that designated sign area.
Yeah. Selby, could you quickly remind, um, council how long after an election that the signs are allowed before the, the responsible party takes?
I believe it's fifteen, fifteen days.
Okay, I just wanted to refresh her on that. Thank you.
Hmm.
Uh, I think it would be a good idea for us to amend these DSA's if we move forward with this code amendment, cause it will be in conflict. Is that something that we can modify today or would you prefer it at a later date?
Um, for, uh, at a later date, I did run this through the attorney and he said, as I said, that the way it's drafted, um, they would not be allowed within Highway Two DSA's. And the other DSA's, as I mentioned, would require property or, uh, abutting property owner.
So basically, you're getting rid of the political signs from all of the sign designated sign areas.
Correct. And now if someone has, wants to put a campaign sign, they have to get permission, which is essentially an endorsement from a property or abutting in order to place that sign.
Did you say who's doing compliance on this? Did you mention that?
It'd be community development.
Oh.
So it means like no longer, uh, Ski Hill, next to Crystals, you get. next to Crystals, you get to have Crystals appoint permission to, you just can't put them there.
And Tom Lynn's, if you do it on the other two, on, on
One on First Street.
First Street, First Street or his parking area.
Cause he owns that other. He owns that little place by First Street, that's his stuff.
Yeah, he bought that corner.
Um, just below Betty West. Oh, okay. I thought that for the reason we had it for.
No, no.
What will compliance look like on this? Will the city be actively seeking information on placed signs or will it be based on the property owner's complaint?
It would be based on property or complaint. I don't think we want to go around chasing every sign we see and asking secret information from the property owners. Like most of our code enforcement is complaint driven.
And so we're in.
So I gotta go take down some of my signs. I, you know what? I'm, I'm not gonna pass certain ones to try to go that way. I would rather take it down.
Well, some however, Daners could say yes to all of them. I mean,
Yeah.
The First Street one has had for all sorts of different campaigns, so.
Along with furniture.
Right.
Right. Well, we have notices and, and and because of the campaign signs, we see the increased number of commercial signs advertising a landscaping service, a house cleaning service. For sale signs are always exempt. Well, I mean, I'm thinking here, real estate signs are certainly exempt.
Okay, Anne, what, in your, what you said, what was the DSA or whatever, whatever you said?
It, it's the maps that are in the
Pardon me, feel the tab ten.
Other questions, comments, discussion?
Yeah, I had, I said the question is. Can we go back and modify this or? Cause I think there's a point where I think where we had them, like across from Crystals or in the fur place, but in, uh, First Street, that was like kind of a traditional place to put signs. So I would think that would, that you wouldn't have to go through unless you get exposed if Tom Lynn personally asked, I mean, took them down or whatever. I guess you you gotta know how to get a hold of these people for one thing, so.
And to your point, I could see a friendly amendment to what's before us. Um, adding the language except for when placed in a designated sign area that is not within the Highway Two right of way.
Right, cause there is one of, one or two of them, two of them were, are in the Highway Two right of way. And if we're gonna clean up the Highway Two, we should probably get rid of all of them. But the others are in city right of way, but abutting and we could exempt those from needing permission.
I think the designated sign areas would be a good future conversation to, to decide whether or not we want to make a distinction between those designated sign areas and other city rights of way in front of private property or whether or not we want to treat them all the same. Because the whole point of the creation of the designated sign areas originally was to really focus those types of signs and not have them littered everywhere in the right of way.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that that's worthy of another conversation.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. They, they were designated and they held pretty well and, uh, no one worked, no one, no one was putting them alongside the highway till this last primary, so.
Could you create another DSA somewhere on that end? So if you're gonna use those only, except private property, then maybe we need to look at a couple other spots and create a so that it's a balance throughout the town. It's not just on a certain by the corner.
Everything on the right of way.
But we still don't want to allow campaign signs within Highway Two.
Yeah, I, I agree. I get, I'm just saying is that other city right of way, you can put on private property, no city right of way. But like, let's say on that end of Ski Hill or Pine Street or whatever, you create a corner there or something that you could have a small area and say, okay, we're.
If we could bring back the whole designated sign area as a future study session discussion gets.
But it's a good start.
Did this estate already have a non, or have a department? They already have it, so.
They do.
That's why we're.
Well, we would just go ahead and put it in as an extra boost.
Yeah, so what happened when the complaints came through, Sharon? We reached out to DOT. They said, yes, you're right. We prohibit these types of signs within the right of way, but where the highway runs through the city limits, there's a management agreement with DOT for us to manage the, manage the highway within our corridor within our limits. And they basically said that we will not enforce the removal of any campaign signs. That's something you have to do. Our attorney cautioned us from taking that enforcement action without something being codified in our.
And so this would.
Codify that nothing along Highway Two right of way and the permission. Right now it'll be permission of the abutting landowner totally, including all of these designated sign areas until we have that discussion. I would entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to adopt ordinance sixteen seventy-seven, amending Leavenworth Municipal Code Section fourteen point ten point zero five five subsection oh to prohibit political election signs in the Highway U S Two right of way and adding an abutting owner consent requirement for all political election signs.
Okay.
Marco has to start while we're still reading.
I'm listening intently. I love it.
Mr. Mayor, there's a question.
Oh, uh, I see a question. Polly.
Yeah, I was just wondering, as long as you're talking about, you know, kind of signs littering highway, I mean, why not prevent all signs, you know? Everybody's, you know, whether they're window washing or I know, there, you're right, there are a bunch of signs out now. And if you're, you know, thinking about keeping the highway clean, I'm not sure why you don't just kind of eliminate all signs. That, this is a question.
Thanks, uh, Polly. Those, those are prohibited and most of those signs have been pulled and the owners of the signs have been contacted by community development staff.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Um, action item eleven, ordinance sixteen seventy-eight, Code of Ethics, Selby.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. At your last study session, we discussed a draft Code of Ethics that I work with our city attorney on for your consideration. I received some feedback and some comments, um, and I sent you all a redlined version of, of what you had before you today for your consideration. There was one point of discussion that we had about absentee's and there was conversation within the study session of making it not just three consecutive unexcused absences, but three unexcused absences over the course of a twelve month period. Uh, council said that is contrary to the RCW, um, therefore he struck that from my changes and put back in the three consecutive unexcused absences.
Okay.
The Leavenworth City Council moves to, uh, ordinance.
Well, we, we can ask.
Oh, okay.
Um, Leavenworth City Council moves to adopt ordinance sixteen seventy-eight, adding chapter two point two four Code of Ethics to the Leavenworth Municipal Code.
Second, second. Okay, keep on seconding. All right, it's been moved and seconded and now Sharon, you had a question.
Okay, on page six, ordinance six, nine, number nine, um, it says, um, that you, um, if you think, you know, the three consecutive regular meetings of council within a calendar year without being excused by the council. So does that mean somebody could call me up and I could excuse them or I thought you had to be excused by the mayor or does it matter?
So, um, I'm glad you brought that up. Uh, we'll have to add to our, uh, rules for the council to put in an excusing procedure for excusing absences. Right now, I think we've considered absences to be excused if there's forewarning. Clint can't make it because he's got a commitment, Jason's sick, whatever the excuse is. For, for knowledge seems to have excused that absence. We have discussed, um, actually acknowledging the absences and having excused by action of council for future meetings. But that's something that we would have to amend, uh, with our council rules.
But if you had to be gone on Monday and the Tuesday council meeting, how can we excuse them back then?
You would excuse them that, we would say so-and-so's not here and then we would that it's excused, here's the reason, okay. You would pass it. That's what a lot of communities have done. Um, is their council decides whether to excuse somebody and if it's just we're not here to punish, we just make it.
Yeah, I know.
You just make it official.
Is there an exception to the rule, like in a death or something like that in the family?
That's, that would come. Guys would, you would know, hey, he had immediate feed or head out of town and didn't get a chance to notice by us until one hour. I mean, then you both say that's a valid, you know, I mean, it's just, it's just formalizing a process.
Andrea does keep, uh, she keeps attendance.
Keeps what?
She keeps attendance.
Oh, okay.
Put on here?
Or you know, right.
Can we get records of our attendance? Like back in school? How many tardies?
Charlecy letter.
Okay, yes, uh, any other?
Great, I want a good start.
Okay, um, I'm not hearing any questions, so I will call for a vote. All those in favor of ordinance sixteen seventy-eight, let me see your hand. And it passes unanimously. All right. Going on, action item twelve, the City Hall Exterior Painting Bid Award, and we know that you just received that. Um, because it was, again, one of those last. I mean, you knew it was coming, you just didn't have the fingers. So Andy, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I apologize for the last minute nature of this, knowing that you're gonna can, cancel the second meeting in August. We wanted to push this one through so we could get the exterior paint of this here, so. Um, so yeah, as Andrea included in email and just sent it out, we had a bid opening yesterday. We received five bids, five responsive bids, one non-responsive bid. Um, and American Quality Coatings was, I love us there, coming in with a bid total of fifty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars, including sales packs. Um, as you may or may not know, this project is long overdue. It was originally, quotes were originally solicited over fifteen years ago for this project. It was never completed and it has been budgeted recently again since twenty twenty-one and now is finally on the books and going to happen this year. So we are excited to have the exterior painted and stained.
Where are they from and do you do reference checks?
Um, I, I am personally not familiar with them. I believe they're from Wenatchee. It's either Wenatchee or East Wenatchee. Um, but they're local. And then, um, on top of that, they are on our small works roster.
Okay, so they've been pre-approved.
Yeah.
Basically.
Uh, well.
Not pre-approved, but it.
They are a painting contractor. That is ultimately what our small works roster says. It doesn't mean that they're necessarily qualified. Sorry, let me rephrase that. I mean, that's kind of the same with all of our contractors. It's, they are qualified contractor with a contracting license. And they're licensed and bonded to do the work they do, but it doesn't mean that they have someone who says they didn't. That being said, there, we have specs for a reason. There are qualifications and, and regulations on the work that they must do, so. I apologize. I did not very clearly explain that.
Is there a selection process?
Uh, yes, this is a public works contract, so it is a low bid.
You have to go with the lowest qualified.
I was just curious if there was a process.
Yeah, and I, I know that, um, this is actually contacted that we originally got a more recent quote from back in twenty eighteen. They, they helped to provide some specifications. We didn't just use their specifications, but we combined those with industry standard to write the specs that we required for this project. Um, and if you do want to make a motion, I have, I think Andrew has passed out this paper.
Leavenworth City Council moves to accept the construction bid and authorize the mayor to execute a contract with American Quality Coatings for the City Hall Exterior Painting Project, the amount of fifty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Second.
Do they sign a whole this formal certificate?
Um, yes, they do.
Okay.
Do, do you want to?
If they fall off the building or something happens, we don't want to be responsible for that. They shouldn't.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That's part of the contract.
Is there a, a life, like, is there a guarantee for how long this coating is gonna last?
Um, the way that, that we have a two-year warranty on our projects, all of our public works projects. Um, beyond that, it's ultimately driven by the specifications that we put in for the paint and the stain itself. And, uh, and on the number of coatings, really. So we do take on, you want to put it that way, I would look, one look at it, we, we take on some liability in designing that, uh, and specifying that. But, but they do have a two-year warranty, uh, for their work.
Has the cost of this project been held in our budget for fifteen years?
No, I will say the current budget for this is forty-five dollars, which you can see is less than this. Um, the quote that we got back in twenty eighteen, to put it in perspective, was twenty-six thousand dollars. And then actually talking with one of our current public works employees, he actually used to be a painting contractor previously and he is the reason that I know we had solicited quotes over fifteen years ago because of before he ever started working for the city and owned a painting company.
Wow, well, pain is all triple the price. So, yeah.
So this will ultimately need, need a budget amendment?
Um, I, I think this is fifty-five thousand and we have forty in the budget.
So it'll be part of the budget.
Okay.
All right.
I might squeeze it out of somewhere, but.
All right. Any other? Did we vote? We did it. We did there. All right, thank you. All those in favor, let me see your hand. It passes unanimously. Thank you, Andy. Uh, thirteen, Resolution thirteen twenty twenty-three, an emergency hydrant repair, Andy.
Yeah, so this resolution is before you to replace the five non-functioning hydrants throughout the city. Um, so the, these are throughout the city. There's one on Ice Road, there's two, two on Alpensee Strasse, one on Pine Street and First Street at the intersection and one in the commercial efficient. So throughout the residential and then one in the commercial area. Um, ultimately, the driver behind this project is our current high fire danger. Um, just knowing that depending on the season, our high fire danger could last for up to another two months in this season. We feel it's imperative that we have these repaired immediately. And just to provide a little bit of background on this, I, I, I'm not positive on the time duration that we've known that these have been an issue. Um, but I do know that we just recently had a project, uh, part of our wastewater phase three sewer lining project. There was some work taking place on Alpensee Strasse. And it came to our attention, um, that there was a third hydrant on Alpensee Strasse that had an issue. They thought that they were going to have to decommission that one. And so that was ultimately how this kind of got brought up. And we realized this is actually an emergency. If we have any other hydrants that are in proximity to one of these hydrants that are already down, we have a serious emergency if this fire. Fortunately, the third one on Alpensee Strasse ended up being fine. We were able to repair it. Um, but there are two in that neighborhood of the existing five that are out of service due to a cracked barrel. Yeah. So, so that's mostly the driver.
Oh, no, I'll vote twice.
That, that's ultimately the drive behind this resolution and the emergency declarations, so that we can get this repaired immediately this fire season.
And can I just jump in briefly too? Cause in Tom's defense, he has ordered a replacement hydrant last year and it's just been backordered. So I don't think that one ever got replaced and that's one of the ones that's still down. Does that sound familiar, Andy?
It does not, but you probably know more about that than I do.
Yeah, so it's, some of it's been on the radar and they've been trying to fix it for a while, so.
And, and part of that too is the current hydrants, we have all of these are older hydrants that we cannot get replacement parts for. They're also undersized and so that way we can, we can bring them up to modern standards at the same time.
Let's do this. All right. All right, let's do it. I don't have.
Another thing that I didn't get in front of you, um.
The motion.
Yeah, how would you like, how would you like to debate the motion?
I'll try. Lovemore City Council moves to approve resolution thirteen dash twenty-two-three. Um, for declaring an emergency related to replacing non-functioning fire hydrants during high-risk wildfire season.
Second.
And waiving the competitive bidding or regardless.
Okay, moved by Anne, seconded by T-Bor, well done. All those in favor, let me see your hand. It passes unanimously, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And now, Selby, approve an increase for NMC Architects, the pool feasibility study scope.
Thank you, Mayor Council, um, when we gave an update on the pool feasibility study two meetings ago. Um, there is a couple of requests, one was to add a cost budget estimate for. Um, going back to what was originally asked for, which was putting a bubble over the pool. Um, so that would include a, a new bathhouse. Um, and a new pool, so. Let's say the pool has about a five-year life without any money put into it, this would give us a cost estimate for building a brand-new pool. Having a temporary seasonal cover over it, and a new, uh, weatherized, um, changing room bathhouse. So that's one add, the other add was to attend a couple more P R C meetings, and then the big one is having them come back. To do, um, a community forum at the Fest Hall, which is tentatively scheduled for September nineteenth. Um, based on your approval to add another ten thousand dollars to the scope of this project.
What is the temporary cover, what does that look like?
It's what people originally started talking about, which was a bubble, that gets put up, um, gets put up in the fall when it gets too cold, stays up through the spring, and then brought back down again.
Okay.
So P R C eliminated that initially, very early on in the feasibility study process, based on concerns of the pool's old. Um, the waiver involves the longevity of the, of, of the cover and, uh, lack of a place to store it, or identify.
Anesthetics.
And these.
Anesthetics, right.
All of us.
All of you.
But it was asked by, it was asked by a member of council to add that to their scope. Um, and, and this project has taken a little longer, um, than anticipated, so they've budgeted for a couple more meetings of the P R C. And the very important colored form at the Fest Hall on September nineteenth.
Okay, because I've looked in one of those in the winter, and it's real steamy, so I couldn't see people swimming, and, um, there's a lot of algae on the inside of it. I've gone to two, and I noticed what happens is condensation, so it feels like it's raining. Yeah, so I just, that's all being taken in.
They have H V A C considerations to deal with that, if you speak to the, the newer ones, the modern ones, they have H V A C that manages those, the humidity.
Take out the moisture, I'm sure there is a, a fix.
I'll make a motion to amend the N A C contract net, add ten thousand dollars to perform the duties that Selby just articulated.
Second.
Moved by Marco, moved by. Moved by Jason, seconded by Marco, any other questions?
Is this something that we can coordinate with the board authority on?
Well.
Then direct us to apply for funds.
I will be reviewing their, reviewing their grant information tomorrow.
Thank you, Selby.
Applying for either this or a portion of the Parkin study, but I will be putting in for.
Ten thousand.
Also go for both.
He said, he has, he said, put in for ten, so.
And, um, Selby, could we apply the, uh, could we apply the, um, Kim Schreier money to this?
No, it's going to be, we're not going to get that till.
Right.
N A C is going to get paid way before we will ever get that money.
Okay, I didn't know the timeline, but I know it involved a covering for the pool.
It did, oh, yeah, but not for this feasibility study.
Okay.
Typically, that kind of federal money requires procurement process before you extend it.
All right, we've got a motion in the second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passed unanimously. Item fifteen, look at all the action we're taking. Ordinance sixteen seventy-nine, local program financing, and that's. And tell.
Thank you, Mayor Florrie, Council, I apologize for sending you, what, what was it, fifty-page ordinance, sixty-page ordinance?
It's at least forty.
And Andrea Florrie, that, so, uh, the reason this came at the eleventh hour is that. The state local program was holding and awaiting confirmation to approve us for the funding, and then they. Did go ahead and approve us the day after the packets were produced. And of course, their deadline for returning it is the end of this month, and we were canceling our next meeting, so we did have to push this quickly in front of you. Uh, this is for the one point six million dollars to finance a street sweeper, the vector, and the two international dump trucks. The budget is already included at the one point six million. I do want to point out that you did make a specific motion back on September thirteenth of twenty twenty-two. Authorizing, uh, the Public Works Department up to one million four hundred and fifty thousand at that time. But we did budget for the one point six, and this ordinance is for the one point six, and that is the ask from, uh, Tom and his department. The financing for this has been finalized at ten years, there was options to stretch it out further. Because the vector and the dump trucks were between fifteen and twenty-five years for their expected life. But the street sweeper fell in at ten, and so they have to go with the lowest year of the piece of equipment within there, so we, we are going for the ten. In the long run, that dice saved us more money on interest. They don't have interest rates right now, the way that this works is that they go out, they got, they have a pool of all the cities, all the counties and the state. And they put a bond sale out there all at the same time, so our open goal is to get lower interest rates than what we would do if we were to go all by ourselves to a traditional bank. And try to get that funding source. Uh, for twenty-four, that's when the debt service payments will begin. And we do have a budget already included for debt service payments, unfortunately, it was based on a fifteen-year plan. So we have about a hundred and thirty-five thousand in the budget, and conservative estimates are looking at about two hundred thousand a year. And a little less conservative is two hundred and ten thousand a year. So we will have to look at anywhere between a sixty-five and a seventy-five thousand dollar amendment to the E R R fund to fund this, um. I feel confident we can do that within the E R R fund, but I wanted that to be upfront with you. On their last sale on June seventh, they did sell for ten-year equipment at two point eight-six percent. And the state sold theirs for a ten-year at three point one-eight, so the local program did save nearly a half of a percent in, in the interest rates when they did their sell. Are there any questions?
Entertaining motion then.
Lovemore City Council moves to adopt ordinance sixteen seventy-nine, the authorization for the acquisition of personal property and execution of a financing contract and related documentation relating to the acquisition of said personal property.
Second.
Moved by Anne, seconded by Sharon. Any other discussion? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passed unanimously.
Tom thanks you all.
Yes. From, where is he at?
Wisconsin.
Wisconsin. Wisconsin, I can't remember where he was going, east or south, I know he goes both, so, all right. Um, reports. Karen.
Okay, it's going to slobber this together, but. I, um, don't make the mayor's breakfast on the first day of the month again. I didn't turn the page in time until like the next day after, and there it was, so I didn't come because I didn't want to. I came because you put it on the first, and I didn't turn my calendar, so, um. Also, the planning commission meeting I attended on the second, and, um. Uh, B and Bs was what they were talking about for the, pretty much the whole time, and that's always an interesting discussion. And you know what, I really recognized at that, at that meeting, how hard the planning commission works. Going through all kinds of somersaults and handstands and all, you know, tunnels to try to. Uh, ferret out everything that they possibly can find and think about and discuss, and I don't know why I saw it so much there, um. Yeah, and I don't want to wear my glasses either, so. Okay, and on the third, I attended the Osborne Playground Equipment, um, meeting, and, um, there was a representative. I didn't get all the names and things, I couldn't find that piece of paper, but there was a representative there from the company, and I can't remember what the company's name was, Selby, do you know what it was? Um, something, was it something sports or?
Sorry, I was reading something.
Oh, okay, the, the lady that came to the, um, oh, no, because I wasn't there.
Okay, I couldn't remember, okay, anyway, she came and, um.
If we wait very much longer to make decisions, um. Then if the whole thing can't start till like August of next year or something, so we're kind of under the gun to get going, and we have. Um, like a, a, a big structure, um, for two through five, and, um, one through five through twelve ages. And the smaller structures are kind of for the littler kids, and then the other structure is bigger, because the little kids, as they get, you know, closer to. You know, the, an older age will already be scrambling up in that, so we're working really hard to, um, make that happen, um. For, I'd say, before summer's over next year.
Great Western recreation.
Great Western, okay, and she was really knowledgeable, and it sounds like they do a lot of playgrounds. Um, um, let's see, on eight, seven, oh, I, I just, oh, solid waste. Um, what it do with the solid waste information, because there's something on there. Look, it's solid waste, here it is. Okay, I just one thing, we didn't have a quorum there, so, um, I just wanted to mention this one thing, there will be for the, um. Residents in Shaland County for free attire collection, um, at the, um, Dryden Dump. On the eighth through the twentieth, at the transfer station, is that the same thing? Okay. And, um, that'll be, um, the eighth through the twentieth of September. So they'll take all tires, and, um, you guys are, we're all free that live here in the, in the county, so that was kind of an important thing. So I also wanted to, um, congratulate Andy on her, um, Mrs. Under Thirty.
I didn't know that was called.
Well, she's married and she's under thirty, so anyway, she was recognized in the, uh, eleven, uh, Wenatchee World with her picture. And, uh, with some other under thirties, and the Wenatchee World has been doing this for several years now, so. It was nice to see your face pop up and all of your little qualifications and things, so congratulations. And, um, let me look really quick, I think that, oh, I just was going to say that's kind of to do with those things, but. Starting yesterday, I've been hearing, and you guys probably have too, tons of complaints about that traffic jam and the one on Chump Stick. That, um, truckers that, you know, are, 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 they're losing money, because instead of being able to maybe get to eight places. They can only get to four, and so they've made commitments to be places, and so I'm wondering why they're not doing that at night like they did here. Because you put, any way you go, you're, there's construction going, and so, um, do you know something, Andy?
Yeah, I'm happy to add a little bit, um, they're doing twenty-four-hour construction so that they can limit their time and be done prior to autumn week. So they are running twenty-four-hour construction right now.
Okay.
That's why it's taking place during the day.
We'll all pass it on, but. It seems like there should be a spot that opens so that people can get through.
They're going to try to do that as much as they can, they're trying to make some bypass and limit the amount of time they have to do that, but it's just, it's a tight area, and there's just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, no, it's, it's a problem, but it's got to get it done, I mean.
Yeah, and I know that, it's just, now I can at least give an answer, and maybe they won't hit me, but, um, you know, it's, it's tough on the guys, that's their job, that's where they make their money. And it's cut in half going through this, what they can get in their day. That's it, weren't you glad I'm done?
Uh, Andy, do you remember the timeframe for the Chump Stick work that's happening, because I know that's a compounding issue with. You can't even take that as a detour because of the work that's happening.
Yeah, and truthfully, I wasn't familiar with that project is happening, I didn't know that that was going to be taking place, um. It does sound like our contractor is going to be starting on the steel sidewalk project is currently up there. And I believe what they were trying to explain with their schedule is they need to finish that before they can start steel sidewalks. I believe, don't quote me on that, and they told me August twenty-first is their, their start date for steel sidewalks, so presumably they'll be done at the Chump Stick, but.
Okay.
I, I'm working off limited.
No, I get it, thank you for the context you could give, yeah, that's, that's rough. Um, no excuse, my master calendar, the mayor's breakfast just simply did not make it on there. And, uh, yeah, tapped it on the to-do list, which is a bummer, because it's one of the things that I'd love to go to every year, it is really cool, so. My apologies to you and the rest of your staff, I would have loved to have been there, um, but I wasn't, other than that, um, other than my humble apologies, no, nothing else to report.
My only report is the mayor's breakfast. Probably did, uh, I appreciate it and appreciated being there with staff and seeing all their, uh, not rewards, awards that people got for their time and service. And I had to do the Irish goodbye, because I had forgotten a meeting that started at eight, and so somebody texted me and said, are you getting on to this meeting when I was at breakfast? Uh, yeah, I appreciate it, it's all good to hang out with staff, it's cool.
I recently attended, um, the museum's new event, um. Representing the city, uh, with their, um, soft opening of their new Pascosa exhibit, which is really cool, um, they had a private event kind of to. Kick it off, and it was really great to be able to attend that, uh, once it's open to the public, I highly recommend people go check it out, it's, it's really cool. Um, on the twenty-sixth, I joined Link Transit, um, for a site visit up to the Mill Bay Casino to view their structure. Um, as an option for Link Transit as we're considering a campus expansion, um, the structure that Mill Bay Casino uses. Um, is a popular type of structure with a much more affordable price point. Um, it's heavily used by companies like, uh, Tesla and SpaceX and our military, um, and so they are. Highly durable and very efficient, and so, um, it's something that Link Transit is heavily looking into for, uh, the future expansion, rather than. Some expensive metal structure or stick-bone structure.
What was her brand name, what was her concept?
Oh, what, spring structure.
Spring structure.
Yep, spring structure, Google it, pretty interesting, there's a really cool, the whole Tesla. Uh, assembly line is within one of these structures that's this massive campus, um, they have a video on their website, kind of cool to check out, if you have time.
Can it be made to?
Uh. What's that, Marco?
Going to be made to look Bavarian?
Uh, this will be in Wenatchee, so that's a non-issue. I did attend. I did attend the mayor's breakfast, it was really fun to sit with a bunch of the public work staff and talk to them, because we don't have a whole lot of opportunity to see their faces, so. I really had a good time doing that, um, and also just as a reminder, um. Tell all community members, um, of local nonprofits and the like that the Lovemore Fund is open for application right now through the end of the month.
Hey, here, Z.
Okay, um, I attended the, uh. Do what's that? On the thirteenth of July, I attended the thing down in Wenatchee about no community left behind, it was kind of like. Kind of like, a much bigger, bigger version, where we've got planned coming up on Thursday about dealing, living in a. A fire-threatened community and all the operations that are going on, so it's pretty in-depth, uh, well worth the time, um. I won't go over a lot of that stuff, but one thing that kind of caught my eye was that it's a company called Biochar, Tom McCoy, Forest to Farm, he's got. They're actually got some big plans to contract smaller timber. All over the Shaland County, especially up on Nation and Natta Park Ridge to where they're going to take that. They're establishing a site at Winton, and they're going to burn that down, um, so it's quite an operation, I, I, uh. I didn't, hadn't heard of these guys before, so they're going to kind of, I think they're going to become part of a vocabulary, because they've got. Millions of dollars invested in this plant they're putting in up there, so. Anyway, that was one thing, uh, I did a plan, uh, I attended Planning Committee, Planning Commission, uh, with Sharon, um. Well worth the time, um, they talked about, um. They talked about um. Violations on what how they're gonna handle people who are violating um the. The bed and breakfast uh policies, um, and then they also talked about transfer of ownership, um. And they're still looking at that four percent, they think there's basically eight hundred. Single-family resident houses in our little city, not counting multifamily. Structures, and so that comes to what um. About a four percent cap is what they're thinking as far as bed and breakfast uh in that range, so that's still being worked out. That's kind of what happened uh there, and then I did have the pleasure of attending the uh. Mayor's Breakfast, and it was great sitting next to folks and staff and just hanging out, so we appreciate that. That's it.
Ebor, I went to the mayor's breakfast. Things going on, um, and that's, but it was great, is that what Carl, we had a great conversation?
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor, go for your Marco.
Marco.
I also went to the mayor's breakfast and I was. Um, no, I sat with um Public Works. I got to know exactly what they were doing on a day-to-day basis and got a feel for their day-to-day complaints and praises and. How they felt about life and their pay and those kinds of things, so that was really relevant and. I think like, um, I think Anne mentioned that you don't, we don't always have a good opportunity to sit and listen to those guys and. Find out how they really feel about their day-to-day work here, so that was excellent, other than that, um, end of report.
Alright, thank you. Um, just briefly, I'll just tell you uh for my report, I just went to a tri-commission meeting this afternoon, which is. The tri-commission is in Shalane County, it's the P U D, this county, and the Port Authority, the the other as well as mayors and. And uh other, I mean, all of those staff, but they basically hold a meeting together, they call all three meetings of the. Public um P U D and the port and and the commissioners um and hold a joint meeting with. With mayors as well, um, Jim, who um Kuntz who came and talked to us, um. Made the presentation about their big projects, including the Microsoft and phenomenal, um, and and Jim is. Very creative, innovative, very, he and he doesn't, he's not afraid of taking risks, like he said, they lost on Cagmire, but it did stop him from. You know, going down that, you know, path and and trying to make that possible, but um. But he did make a comment when, and he mentioned it again tonight, you know, the fact that seventy-five jobs that. That he felt like um the community can absorb those into their um fairly easily. And what I confronted him on was the fact that this, this, the Shalane County is. Underbuilding houses right now, so adding seventy-five would normally be absorbable. But right now, um, we are behind in Shalane County by, I think they said seventeen hundred units. Every year we get further behind, we're not creating enough to house, housing is a critical, not just in Leavenworth. It's, it's in our state, our state is a million housing units behind, if we doubled the number of housing units that we. Do in this state, we wouldn't make it up for ten years, um. That's a huge backlog of housing, and my challenge to Jim was to start thinking of housing. In tandem with economic development, because they are gonna be much more one of the same. Association of Washington Cities did a survey on economic development, and the number one. Um, impediment to economic development by all the developers is housing, housing. So, you know, that's gonna be more and more. Let me repeat it. Anyway, I just, you know, and I, you know, I just wanted to bring that up and and challenge the port to to seriously look at innovative ways. That they can be a broker for housing as well as a broker for business because. Because that is gonna be a key, I think, to keeping economic development going as, you know. And that's housing of all types, that's not just a horrible housing, but it's it's workforce, it's and it's gonna be more and more critical, but. Anyway, that's my input for the night, I'm surprised it's about housing, but.
Critical infrastructure.
It is critical, so.
There goes my property taxes.
Alright, thank you, Mayor, um, so today I applied for a two hundred thousand dollar integrated planning grant from the Department of Ecology. Toxic Toxic Waste Cleanup Division of Brownfields. Unit um to conduct a diligence for the car wash property. If awarded, funds will be used to conduct phase one and phase two environmental site assessments and planning for a public works campus expansion. And before you ask, it doesn't look like we're gonna get any asbestos money from Ecology, but she gave me a couple other avenues to check out. Um, the mayor and I met with representatives from N C W libraries to discuss the potential of moving the library to the Osborne property. They seem very excited about the idea of moving into that residential area with more space for programming, cool. Um, A R C Architects is putting the final touches on the presentation boards for the project, which will be presented to the community at the August twenty-fourth. Block party at the Osborne, and if there is um support for that, I'd bring it next to a study session, and then we'd move forward with an R F Q. We discussed the timeline with N C W libraries, and I said if it takes us about a year, let's say we get support, people like it. We get a consultant on board, but in November, we've got a year-long project to figure it all out, so that's perfect timing for a grant. Um, which will be due December of twenty-four, that could award up to two million dollars to help with the library portion of this project. Uh, Rick Williams Consulting is kicking off the parking study update this month, consultants will be conducting parking inventory counts sometime, I cannot tell you when. Um, and this will form the study and the recommendations. Yesterday, I met with representatives of the Leavenworth Golf Club, um, and they will be tending the September twelve study session to provide an annual operations update. Uh, and discuss potential changes to the lease agreement, which is due to be renegotiated by June of twenty-four. And a reminder of the uh wildfire workshop taking place this Thursday at six P M here in Council Chambers. Um, I know you asked for the fest hall, but it was booked, um, so it's why it's why it's taking place here and on Zoom.
It was booked by the Association of Washington Cities.
Uh, representatives from Shalane County uh Fire Department number three, Fire District number three, and Shalane County Emergency Management are committed. Uh, the U S Forest Service is hoping to attend depending on their other firefighting commitments. So haven't really put together agendas per se, but it will be Shalane County Fire first. If U S Forest Service is here, that's second, and then third would be emergency manager to talk about evacuations. So what uh one thing I noticed and I asked of the Forest Service to present that they do indeed come is the technology they use. To forecast the spread of fire, it was pretty impressive, um, what they demonstrated that the chumps, that the mock Chumpstick tabletop exercise we did in June. Uh, and a reminder of the community block party on August twenty-fourth.
Is there gonna be some outreach sometime soon for assigning people duties, council members and such at that block party?
She started, she started getting staff. I thought I saw your name on the list.
Oh, yeah, she got it all mapped out.
She'll, she'll tell you what you're.
I want to ask you a question, with what you're hearing about the thing for Thursday night, cuz you've been pushing for this for how many years, a lot? Um, does that feel, you feel like that's gonna?
I really don't know what it looks like, I really have no idea, I mean, my hope is that people that attend, I hope. It's well-attended, number one, I hope people walk away with a better sense of what happens when.
Okay.
Cuz I have questions about that, I mean, I've I've had, the Fire District's talked a little bit about their evacuation planning. I got one of their reports three or four years ago, and it quite frankly didn't seem that comprehensive, they go door to door when phone lines are down or cell phones are down or whatever, and I. I didn't love that answer, cuz it'd be really hard to go door to door in our town and clear people out in a in in emergency, but I I'd like to hear. Her thinking about evacuation, what the threats are, I know that all those guys think about, and women think about this all the time. They live and breathe it, I just, I would love some of that to be distributed to us, yeah.
Is this being advertised, um?
Yeah, I put out a social media post on it uh about it last Thursday, and then it was put out again in detail on the Sunday update that we did.
By social media, I mean through the, from the city, to whoever's got email.
I li- literally asked Andrea to put together a little graphic that I could put out on Instagram, and then I posted it to Instagram, Facebook, Twitter. Uh, that was Wednesday or Thursday of last week.
And it will be by Zoom too.
Could it go in the echo, can't make it echo.
But it also goes to our email distribution list.
Right, yes, it did, it did, because that's what she emails out on Sundays, yeah.
Anyway, we'll see, Sharon, I mean, it could be one of many, but.
Yeah, I just wondered cuz I know you've been push, push, pushing.
I have, thank you for listening.
Yeah, I mean, when you watch a town burn down and nobody really has had a chance to do that other than the people who have actually witnessed it. It makes you think that if we're not ready for that, it's gonna be chaotic, and it generally, only thirty homes burned in Wenatchee in two thousand fifteen, and it was total chaos. That's only thirty homes, where Chief Kelly O'Brien, the last time he was in city council, mentioned the word conflagration, that's when. Ten to fifteen to twenty homes were all burning at once, and that's something that our fire department absolutely cannot.
Okay, we're doing um, we're doing the staff updates now.
I I'll just report, the P R S A was under audit, and the P R S A has completed their audit. They started weeks after we did, and they finished weeks before we did. Um, I would credit most of that to the fact that the P R S A is a very small agency, it only has one revenue stream. Property tax that gets transferred to the city, so it's a very simplistic annual report. Uh, they've only provided the exit letter at this moment in time, and I did forward that. That was forwarded out to the P R S A board, so I know Marco and uh Jason did receive copies of that. The official audit report is still yet to come, that'll probably be within the next week or two, and when they post that, I'll forward that to you, so. You can go take a look at that if you're interested. It's a clean audit.
Are you done?
I was gonna tag on to the P R S A thing, you sent an email to the P R S A board and for the public and council. We were really advocating to go past Labor Day, but it looks like we can't afford it. So we're hoping to go into September, a couple of weeks to spread goodwill to the pool, but financially, it doesn't look like we can swing it.
I did B C C the whole council on that email. The reason we can't is because of the waging increases that that we authorized for the pool employees, and it did utilize. Every bit of reserve that we had set aside.
So it closes Labor Day?
Well, it was good to keep it open as much as we did, which I think was the trade-off for higher wages, cuz without higher wages, we wouldn't have had any.
Yeah, we pulled up out the nosedive.
And it has been tested in other years, going a couple weeks longer, and pretty much the kids are all in sports. And so outside of lap swimmers, water aerobics, there's not a lot of people that, even on nice, beautiful water, beautiful weather. So it, you know, not that it wouldn't be the same as that now, but it has been tried.
Yeah, I think if you revised the business model of the pool and actually marketed it, that could change, but I understand what you're saying, Sharon.
Andy, you have some.
Yeah, uh, really quickly, there's something to give Ben Wherson shout-out, he just passed his Water Distribution Manager two exam, so that is exciting. And then on the project in front, um, the wastewater phase three project, that's our C I P P lining project is underway, um. We have encountered some serious degradation of our sewer mains, so we will be coming to you with a change order next week. And the ski hill sidewalk project, like I mentioned, is starting the end of August. I've had a lot of questions from the public because we did put out notification really early, you're thinking that would already be done by now, but. It is still getting constructed this year, we're just waiting on the contractor's um schedule to allow them to start, so end of August. And then lastly, as everyone is aware, Link's Roundabout is underway, we've got a lot of questions and complaints about that, so. Just to be clear to everyone, it is Link's project, it sounds like Link has been redirecting people to the city, and so we are clarifying that with Link. Just to make it clear that that is their project and they will be responsible for.
Andy, do you have, sorry, uh, you might have mentioned it earlier, but if it's starting at the end of August, do we have an E T A? Possible for the end of the ski hill project, like done by?
I told Chantel earlier, I'm not that good at remembering numbers off the top of my head.
Does the Autumn Leaf organizers understand, I can't remember if they use ski hill, like, cuz the roots are gob- gobbled in my mind, cuz last year was changed. Cuz of uh other construction.
We we have Autumn Leaf included in their contract, it's one of the Fridays they can't work, and all of that work at that point will be shoulder work, so it should impact Autumn Leaf.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
That's it, alright.
Nice job, everybody.
Alright, yeah, just a quick little update, um, we are still looking for a building official, we did some interviews, there weren't, uh. There were good candidates, it just weren't a good fit candidate, so we're continuing to advertise for the building official and grateful for the contract. Uh, worker, we have Brock on board doing a lot, and that's been great, um. We are working closely with the Leavenworth Meadows uh development as they get close to getting their billing permits. Out the door and starting work to make sure that we're prepared to do inspections on uh ongoing basis for that larger project. As well as the hotel. In any case, we also have the senior planner position posted, so if you know anybody's interested. We may need to backfill that with just a regular planner, so we'll reevaluate that coming up. And then the position for a permit tech is open, uh, and we have some qualified candidates applying for that, so. I'll be excited to report back to the city council in September. Having said all that, the design review board uh meetings have been scaled back to once a month, just to allow for staff to complete other tasks. And that seems to be working okay for the moment, and we're happy to field questions as we get into fall. So, we're busy, but managing, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Willa.
Alright, we are ready to go into an executive session under R C W forty-two, thirty-one, ten, one, I. Pending litigation, we anticipate it being fifteen minutes and no action afterwards. I would entertain a motion to recess into executive session. Moved by Jason, seconded by Clint, all those in favor, let me see your hands. Okay, we will go into executive session for fifteen minutes.
Thank you for attending.
So you're gonna plan to come out?
Out and then go back in, yup. Cuz it's a different, it's not executive session, the second one, okay.
Oh, right, so this was cool.
Yes, um, can I, um, is it okay if my husband sits here or I can move to another room, it's an alternative, either way, no offense.
Give her to Nikki.
Um, that break attorney-client privilege, and it's my understanding of outside counsel um attending this particular executive session, so. Unfortunately, it would need to be in a different room.
No, no worries at all, I just know that I had an option to disclose, and. So I wanted to.
Walking further away from her router.
Yeah, we're gonna go to a different state, so we may lose her, but anyway. Um, we're stopping with her. And are now. I will, I'll get out of. We now resume our open meeting, if we've got anybody else or anybody. Just a different tool, okay, um, I, let's focus here, folks, I will. Ask for um a motion to recess into a closed meeting under R C. a motion to recess into a closed meeting under R C W forty-two thirty-one forty-four B on wages and collective bargaining. This would be thirty minutes and no action to follow.
So made. Okay, second.
Okay, see, move, Sharon seconded. All those in favor? Let me see your hand. All right, we will go into a closed meeting now. And stop recording and we. How long do we need to go back and forth?
But he's still got.
I've got a ten minute presentation. At least.
So.
Five more, but then you guys are gonna want.
How about twenty minutes and we can.
Okay, yeah.
Like twenty.
Okay, we are back in session. Is there anybody in the waiting room?
No.
No, no, they're all gone. Okay. I would entertain a motion to go back into, it's not executive session. We're going back into um uh but 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 closed meeting. Thank you. Uh so twenty minutes moved and seconded. All those in favor? Let me see your hand.
Who moved and you seconded?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I moved.
Jason and.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, we will stop recording and we will be until now back in.
Ten, ten minutes.
Make a motion.
Yeah, I'll go, I'll make a motion to go back into closed session for fifteen additional minutes.
Yeah.
Seconds.
Second, okay, move. I'll take your yes a second. Move by Jason, the add by see for fifteen more minutes.
Yeah.
All right. We good?
Yep.
I'll take, I'll take.
I would move to adjourn.
I don't know. You seconded that one. It doesn't matter.
Jason did.
Unison.
No, no, get it to Marco.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh.
It's very late for Marco. Thanks, Marco.
Thank you, Marco. Enjoy the cape.
All right, Marco.